Good morning, everybody. Could we have roll call, please, Nikki?
Thank you, yes. Supervisor Arroyo?
Here.
Supervisor Madron?
Present.
Supervisor Wilson?
Here.
Supervisor Bone? And Supervisor Bushnell?
Good morning.
All right, if you would please join us with the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, founded on indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Great, thank you very much. And CIO Hayes, do we have any modifications to the agenda?
Good morning, Chairman Madron. We do have two modifications. Item J1 is a public hearing that will be continued, so we'll hear that prior to the consent calendar. And item C13 is being pulled for discussion.
Okay, great, so C13 polled, and item J1, we'll pull it up in front of the consent calendar. So we will do that right now. So Director Ford? And this item is going to be continued, I believe, and that is why we're bringing it forward, so that staff can get back to work.
Thank you, Chairman Madron, and members of the board, John Ford with Planning and Building. This item was advertised for this date, and to be completely transparent, we didn't get the board report done. So we're asking that it be continued to the next meeting, which is March 21st, at which time the public hearing will be held.
Great.
So you do need to open the public hearing to see if there's any comments on the continuance.
Great, so we'll open the public hearing, and if there's anyone in Zoom or here present today that would like to speak on this item, you're welcome to do so. But if you do speak now, then you won't be able to speak. They can speak at either point. Okay, county council, I see you're nodding.
Public comment is limited to the continuance on this item.
So no comment, public comment right now? Or public comment is... Go ahead.
Public comment is limited on the continuance. So it will not preclude somebody that comments on this item from commenting on the item when it comes back on the 21st.
Very good, okay. So if you speak now, you will get another chance later. But at this point, we'll see if there's any commenters in Zoom, Nikki? Is there anybody with their hands up on this item?
Yes, Chair Madron, I have caller 7454.
Great, 7454, this is your opportunity to speak on this continued item. Speaking on the continuance.
Thank you for my opportunity to speak on the continuance. I always appreciate John Ford's honesty when there's something that happens. I think maybe this continuance is necessary, maybe because we need to look toward more staffing and more funding to enable John to do his wonderful work there. That's my comment on the continuance, and I support you continuance to next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your brevity. Is there anybody else in Zoom with their hands up?
No, Chairman Madron, there's no.
Okay, and we'll bring it back here to the audience. Is there anybody here today who would like to speak on the continuance? Seeing nobody approaching the podium, we'll bring it back here to the board. And looking for a motion, I guess, to continue at this point. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you, I'd like to make a motion that we continue this item to March 21st.
Thank you.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Supervisor Bushnell, and a second by Supervisor Arroyo to continue the item to March 21st. Could we... Do we have our voting pads up for everybody? Or should we go ahead? Looks like we should do a roll call vote. Okay, no problem. So many things. Yes, it does look like it, and Supervisor Bone does not have it up.
Looks like I'll do a roll call. So we will start with Supervisor Bone. Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. And so with that, we will go to the consent agenda. And we already have one item that's been polled for discussion. And so is there any questions or clarifications at this point from the board on the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve consent.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Seconded from Supervisor Arroyo, okay. First by Supervisor Wilson. And so we'll go to public comment on the consent agenda. And I believe we do have one hand up, 7454. This is your opportunity to speak on the consent agenda. Please let us know which item you're speaking on.
Kent Swatki, I'm speaking on your action summary, item D2. I was very pleased to see the outcome of this particular one that's stated in there. The actual action that was taken was that you were setting up an ad hoc committee comprised of Supervisor Bushnell, Arroyo, and Director Ford. I have been having major concerns regarding this topic. And spent a good deal of my time when I got back from Mexico, literally probably four or five hours working on it, and I appreciate the fact that you folks are willing to sit down at the table and work on this. And I noticed during that process, you were to meet with the sponsors of the thing there to determine if alternative action to voter consideration of the initiative is feasible. And of course, I don't know how you folks do things, but if I have concerns, I go directly to the people. And I do feel it's feasible. I'm quite optimistic that it's feasible, that you will be able to achieve that goal. There's going to be some things I'll talk about a little later that may help you achieve that particular goal, but I'm extremely optimistic. Unfortunately, we seem to be lacking a lot of communication in these things. Mr. Thurman was very easy to get ahold of, multiple conversations, very willing to talk about this. And I won't speak for him, but I again am optimistic that some resolution can be had. Also spent a nice conversation after multiple attempts to get ahold of Natalie DeLa. And I felt that was a productive communication. So on all these things here, it looks like we're heading toward March 22nd for some communication. And I will be speaking about this on auction, not agenda. Specifically, I'll be speaking on that in my three minutes, and some ways to accomplish this task, which I think is in everybody's best interest, and I appreciate my colleagues being able to be allowed on your consent item. Thank you for my change of speed.
Thank you. I do not see any other hands up in Zoom at this point, so we'll come here to the audience here today. Please come forward and let us know which item on the consent agenda you're speaking on, and you've got three minutes. Welcome.
Morning, Thomas Mulder here. I'm speaking on agenda item number seven. I'm in support of the county spending this. I mean, I know it's well over a quarter of a million dollars, but I appreciate that the county is looking at a science-based approach to hydrologic connectivity or potential hydrologic connectivity, rather than what some would consider reactionary policy decisions or knee-jerk policy decisions. So I appreciate that and look forward to seeing what the study brings out. Thank you.
Thank you, commenter. Anybody else here in the audience today that would like to speak on the consent agenda? Seeing none in the audience, we'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Wilson?
I support all items on the consent agenda, but I do want to note that we have quite a bit of expenditures related to updating some of our very old facilities. It just really speaks to the need to figuring out a new path for this institution and its... and the facilities that we use to serve our community.
Thank you. Any other board member wish to make comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion before us.
I'm going to do a roll call.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
And Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much, Nikki. And so now we're going to go to public comment on non-agenda items. And if you're in the Zoom, do we have any hands up, Nikki? Yep, 7454, this is your chance to speak on non-agenda items. You've got three minutes, welcome. Star six to unmute. There you go.
Second try, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I want to... First off, I want to say that communication is a very, very important thing, and we can't get things done without it. But I'm going to communicate something rather directly to some of the people out there who show a lot of angst. Unfortunately, I've been led to believe that some very improper tactics have been used regarding Mr. Mark Thurman, including a sex thing as blocking his access to a driveway, honking horns repeatedly at 2:00 in the morning. During the process, people said, "We know where you live. We know what you drive. This is a very dangerous road. We really wish you would cease to move forward with what you're doing here." And to me, this needs to stop. It needs to stop right now. I'm not pointing fingers at anyone in particular, but these are just actions that have been related to me as having happened. As I mentioned, communication is great. And I have before me an email that was sent just right before the meeting here from Mr. Thurman, and I hope I can share it with you. Because I just left a message on John Ford's phone number asking if we could get together even though there is a meeting next week. I'm a little distressed that none of you have apparently tried to reach out to Mr. Thurman, or maybe you have, but if you do try and call somebody, leave a message on their phone, people say they've tried to reach out to him. But he's a very, very easy person to work with, I've found. And I'm encouraging... I've been encouraged that maybe people like Robert Sutherland would have a seat at this table on the 22nd. I would like to see Larry Glass have a seat there to represent some environmental issues. I don't need a seat at the table, but all I would like to do is see people sit down and talk. I see very small differences here and many misunderstandings, and maybe some things that were not intended to be put into this. And I'm trusting to John Ford and his skill set and the rest of you working with them to do a deal and hopefully a resolution that will not force this to be put on the ballot, but instead we can take care of the problems in an equitable manner. It's always cutting the baby into pieces. You know, nobody's going to be 100% happy on any deal. But I think the lack of communication here... I know that at the planning commission, he was tempted to be precluded from speaking at all on the topic. My understanding is, and I remember regarding coming before Supervisor, he was given 10 minutes, maybe cut to three, maybe cut off at the mic. So that needs to stop, and if you want to get something done, you need to be open and communicate. So I appreciate my opportunity to speak on communication, and I look forward to hopefully a good resolution coming to this, because I think it's necessary for all of us to kind of heal in Humboldt County and get past a lot of what's happened. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, commenter. And are there any other hands up in Zoom? Nope, there are none, so we'll come here to the audience here today. Please step forward and let us... Yeah, and share with us your thoughts.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Madam CIO, County Council's office man, and ladies and gentlemen of Humboldt County. My name is Vernon Price. I'm here as a twofold. I'm here as a participant of the Hope Center, which is a part of our mental health branch, and I'm also here as a behavioral health board member. You have before you this morning two letters, very short, but brief. We are soon to lose two of our extra helps from the Hope Center. I have requested an at-halt proposal from the Behavioral Health Board, which will conclude on April 27th of 2023, and hoping to come findings and recommendations. I will say this much, I have reported this to the grand jury. They have done a tour of the Hope Center, and hopefully we'll find the findings and recommendations from them later on this year. I come before you to cry for those that are unstable to come here. When I say unstable, they're more nervous than I am, and that's saying something. Please read these letters. These are cries from the Hope Center. We need to save our staff. I am looking at some proposals of grants that will cover this. I have sent that proposal of $314 million throughout the state, for peers, by peers, and for peers. I have sent that to our Director of Mental Health and also our peer coach level three, which is Mrs. Garfield, Betty Garfield. So if... Madam Arroyo, Madam Supervisor, if you would take the time to reach out and touch someone in your district from the Hope Center, do a tour or reach out and contact Mrs. Garfield or myself, we would be greatly appreciative. Thank you so much for your time, your concern, and your consideration for allowing me to speak this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, commenter. Welcome.
Good morning, Thomas Mulder here. Sorry, I wasn't present last week. I know there was bad weather, but I had a medical appointment planned out of county, so I was on the road. I tried to participate. I come before you this morning, making my way through inclement weather, facing potential harassment and intimidation to speak to you. As I heard last week, some people don't like to speak. I've been coming to this podium for about eight years. I've faced intimidation, I've faced harassment, coming to this podium, speaking what I have to say, speaking from my heart. I really support public process for decision-making and policy. I don't support reactionary or knee-jerk policy. We have one supervisor that continues to speak negatively about rural living and threatens to take away my children's and my grandchild's right to develop and live in rural living. Let's not forget the main motivations to this whole initiative was simply because there was a meeting in Neyland. The proponents didn't feel they were heard by their elected supervisor, and that's where the signature gathering started. So let's take ownership of where we failed to communicate with people and do our best to communicate, to solve this problem we have before us. This one, I just want to clarify. If I feel, Supervisor Arroyo, if I feel I'm not heard during a meeting, can I email you directly and have that included in the decision-making process? Because last week I heard that someone sent an email, and that was included in the decision-making process, and I don't know if that follows Brown Act or not, but I didn't... As someone who tried to participate, got kicked off the phone, I think about 12 times, I didn't feel it was fair. So I just want to make sure that's out there. Last week was disappointing, to say the least. There was a great housing project that met the rules and added... The added conditions will possibly make that project unbuildable. I don't know if Mr. Kramer has children or grandchildren, but I guarantee that decision that was made last week is telling if he does, "Don't build in Humboldt County." I'll tell you that. We keep saying we want development and business and housing, and our policies do not align. Last week's message was loud and clear. If you bring a project before us, we're going to tear it apart, add conditions to it, and make it unbuildable.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you, Chair. And Chairman Madron, I know you support rural living and people living out in those watersheds. You understand the benefit of them being out there and keeping those ditches clean and that sediment off the roads. And as someone that likes to go in state parks, state park doesn't care for their watersheds. They say they do. Every time I hike, I have to clean those ditches. So please, continue to promote people living in those watersheds. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, commenter. And next, welcome.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Wendy Davidson, and I'm here from the Hope Center. In 2016, I discovered them, and undoubtedly, the employees there not only saved my life, but changed my life. And our employees are so invaluable to us, and we get so much inspiration and empowerment from them. Even losing one of them will be crucial for our continuance of this wonderful peer coach program here in Humboldt County. So I encourage all of you, please do allow us to keep our very, very important employees there, changing lives and saving lives every day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, it looks like that's it for a public comment here today on non-agenda items. And so we will go to items polled from consent. And the first item is D13, and I believe we've got the tax collector here, as well as CIO. And are you presenting this, or...?
No, Amy Christensen, the treasurer tax collector, can present this. And it was Supervisor Bushnell who asked this to be polled to provide some additional information.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you through the chair. So I would also like to ask Director Ford to come up. I pulled this item because there are multitudes of many properties on this list that will go to auction, I believe, in May. Is that correct?
June 15.
June 15. Several of the properties have abatements on them and fines of, or could, up to $900,000. And so it doesn't reference that in here, and I want the general public to know that. I also want Director Ford and Tax Treasurer Christensen to update us on, I believe there's a new policy or some discussion coming forward. So if we could just have a little update. And I really, really just want the public to know that there are lots of abatements and fines that are associated with some of these properties.
Thank you.
I'll start and just say that the $900,000 fines and penalties, to this point, our process has been to impose the lien on the property, which normally gets paid when it sells. But in a case like this, where there's a tax lien against the property, that lien doesn't seem to be included within the tax lien. So one of the things that we weren't able to determine yet yesterday when we saw this is whether or not that lien then would transfer to a new property owner. And then, in the process of somebody purchasing the property at auction, would they be aware that there are NTA notices to abate and notices of violation on the property? And so there are some unanswered questions there that we wanted to have resolved before seeing these properties auctioned off. We are also in the process of bringing back a policy discussion to the board to talk about how to further address these properties that have these very large liens. Because we've imposed them, they're sitting there. We've really not taken any action, because to this point, we have not wanted to foreclose on property, and that is the step. But we believe that the time for the conversation with the board to have a policy discussion on that is ripe, and so within the next month, we will be bringing that forward.
Thank you, Director Ford. And Director Christensen, did you want to add to this item?
Just that the tax collector does have the authority to remove a parcel from the auction at any time, up until 5:00 PM the day before the auction. So these were on our radar, and we would be having additional discussions with the other departments involved.
Great, thank you for that. Yeah, we've all known this was coming for some time, and I guess this is the first group of these auctions that have abatement and things? No, there's been others?
This auction is for tax liens, not for the abatement liens.
Understood. And it's because taxes haven't been paid for five years? Is that correct?
Correct.
Right, but what we've known for a while is that people have been walking away from properties. And so this is that first group, so to speak, coming forward. So I look forward to that discussion at the board. Any other questions, comments from the board? Supervisor Bone, and then Supervisor Bushnell?
Just for clarification, these are tax sales, so five years back when the market was good. They've just walked or haven't paid their bills on this. When we do an abatement, are we not posting the abatement anywhere but just in our office? Are we putting that... So when somebody does a deep dive and does their due diligence and pays their $1,000 and does a deep dive into the properties, this won't show up anywhere?
The notices should show up on title. Yes, they should.
So I'm just saying, who are we posting it with? Do we post it through our...
That's recorded on the property.
Okay. Immediately upon... I'm just saying, if it falls through the cracks and somebody does their due diligence, does their full title and everything else, and then this pops up afterwards?
If people do their due diligence ahead of time, if they see that there's a tax sale and they order the title reports, which, as you mentioned, does cost money to do, and they go through that, they should discover that there are violations and liens on the property. The concern is, is that if people don't do that, they may look and say, you know, "Wow, I can buy this piece of property for $6,200." And then find out later, there's a $900,000 lien on it, there's a notice to abate on it, there's a notice of violation on it, that do travel with the property. And so they end up, for $6,200, getting a $900,000 lien, a notice to abate, and then a notice of violation.
And to our tax collector, there is a disclaimer on all sales that there could... To please do your due diligence, this does not include liens, second mortgages, anything else against the property, isn't there? Don't we have a big disclaimer at the bottom?
Yes.
Fire beware, essentially.
Exactly.
Thanks. Thank you. And then Supervisor Bushnell, and then Supervisor Wilson?
Thank you through the chair. So I understand what Supervisor Bone is saying. Do your due diligence if you're buying properties. However, in this room, this last year, there were properties that did not have those liens attached. So I... You know, my... I feel my job for my constituents is to bring this forward and to say, "Please do your due diligence. Make sure that you think you're getting a deal for $6,200. You may not be." And also because our policy is going to be coming back. You know, I have stated here many times that I don't like that we put a $900,000 lien on it, and nothing happens. It's just sitting out there. There's 10 of them right now, and I know that's one reason that the policy is coming back, and I so appreciate that. But I also just really... Have we checked those properties to make sure that lien shows up? Have you checked any of the 10?
We have not.
Okay. So we would have to pay as a county as well, right, to make sure that was recorded against that? So, I mean, I don't know if there's a way we can make sure, but we should probably make sure. And then, Amy, the night before, if... You wouldn't pull a property off just because there's a lien on it, right?
Well, the code states whatever's in the best interest of the county. So it would be cost recovery for us, so we could. We could pull it for any reason.
Okay. Okay, so thank you for that.
Supervisor Wilson, and then back to Supervisor Bone?
I just want to say that, I mean, if our expectation is with relationship to the real estate professionals, that they are doing their due diligence to let buyers know, and this isn't their market, this is... Let their buyers know about these various liens and other things, then we should be doing our part, especially if it's in our wheelhouse, in our space. That's all. And I feel like we're going to get there. So I appreciate Supervisor Bushnell bringing this up, and I appreciate staff moving us in that direction.
Supervisor Bone?
I mean, I know it's coming back, so it doesn't matter, but it's almost as simple as putting an asterisk next to it, saying this has a county abatement lien. I mean, if it's on there, in case they don't find that, this does not absolve any other seconds, liens, or any types of injunctions against the property. But when it's in-house, when it's our abatement, because we're letting them know there's... We're posting the taxes, what they owe on the back taxes, penalties, and everything else. Seems to me we could put an asterisk saying there is... We don't have to put them out, we don't have to put anything else. They can do their due diligence, but we should probably... Asterisk, like you said, there's 10... I mean, how many are there? There's not very many that are getting this point, and five years... There've got to be five years' lapse on their taxes, and nobody's... We're going to see more in the next couple of years, maybe, because of the market. But with that being said, it sure seems to me it'd be pretty easy for us to just put an asterisk for the time being as we work through this, just so we're making a full aware... Because it's an in-house debt. We're selling a property with our debt on it, so we should put both our debts on it, the abatement and the tax. It's a tax sale, but it... Oh, by the way, we're going to get you... We've got this on there, too.
Director Ford?
That is... Thank you, that is true. One of the things that the policy issue associated with this, though, that is ripe for discussion is whether or not, particularly in cases where these properties are approaching a tax sale, whether or not it would be in the best interests of the public to foreclose on these properties, have them cleaned up, and then sell them, rather than conveying a piece of property for the cost of the taxes and still having that mess there. That is kind of the crux of the policy decision that really is right.
Okay, great, good discussion. And so as I understand it, June 15th, you got up until the day before or so, and the two of you are putting your heads together to figure out how to make sure that this... That the public is well-informed, so to speak, as to what they might be getting into. I guess that's the word of the day, or the two words is due diligence, right, on the part of any person bidding on these properties? And you're going to come back to us to discuss these two options you've brought forward, which is, one, just going forward with the tax lien process, or whether or not to foreclose and go through a cleanup, and then bring it forward for sale. Those are the two options I heard described. You know, it seems... I mean, if somebody's buying property, it's pretty rare for someone not to do a title search. It happens, though, believe it or not, but in auction sales, isn't it... Wouldn't it be kind of uncommon for people to do title search? Not that they shouldn't, but are you aware at all of whether or not people do title searches on auctioned items, auctioned properties? Shelter Cove Property's been coming up every year for...
We see it all, but it would be more rare, I would say, that they don't do any due diligence.
Even for auction sales? Because it costs them a few thousand dollars for that title search, probably, right? And so like, if you're going into escrow on purchasing a property, that expense is well worth it, because you're moving forward, whereas... worth it because you're moving forward, whereas to spend that money before you even know whether or not your bid has been accepted is a whole nother level of commitment that people are making without that assurance per se, I guess. But you do see people, you're aware that people do typically do title searches for even auctioned properties?
Yes.
Great, well, that's good to know. And maybe hopefully this will get us up to 99% of people doing their due diligence. So, thank you for that. Supervisor Royal.
So having not looked at a lot of auction notices before, I have to admit, I don't, I don't know what they typically, how they're typically formatted. So is there a place to do what Supervisor Bone's suggesting to provide that additional disclosure?
I'd have to research that and get back to your board.
Okay, okay.
And so you do plan on coming back to us in the near future, before June 15th, right, to further discuss this item, or no? Go ahead, Director Ford.
Yep.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Well, I think there's two different things that are being talked about. So the tax lien is going forward and will be auctioned on the 15th. Director Ford is going to be bringing back an item about the lien, abatement liens. And that is separate from Amy's item, and I don't believe, and she can confirm, her item won't come back, it's going for auction on the 15th.
Okay.
That's correct, but I can pull any parcels at any time at my discretion.
Great.
But that doesn't need to come to the board, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you for that.
Good, some good clarity, thank you. Supervisor Bone.
And we haven't had any pay a $900,000 lien, have we? What's the percentage? We've negotiated those down in the 90s?
If people make contact with us and want to resolve these, the, I don't know, I can't give you a precise percentage, but it's very, very high. The, I just need to say, the $900,000 liens are reflective of somebody who went just silent, they never responded to us, they've never talked to us. And so that's the worst possible event.
And our focus, and since I've been in your department when I've seen this happen with people, your focus is to work with them, get the property cleaned up, and back on the tax rolls. There is nowhere in our deep desire for Humboldt County to get any property, we will bend over backwards to make it work, either for the new purchaser or the current landowner to come into compliance. And coming into compliance drops your fees quite a bit, as long as there is communication. It's just as simple as that, right?
That is absolutely true. Thank you for saying that.
Supervisor Bushnell.
With that being said, Director Ford, if someone is targeting one of these properties that are going to be sold on the 15th, and they find out or recognize, because I'm going to say it's really abnormal that you would do a title search, people don't, it's like when your owner carry, they don't do title search, Director Ford comes into this all the time because they didn't do a title search. But with that being said, if you're going to want to maybe bid on one of these properties and you learn that there's a lien, and they come in and talk to you prior to the auction and have a discussion with you, is that something you're favorable?
So the process there would be, and we have done this before, where somebody's looking at a piece of property, they're looking to buy it, it's got violations on it, we will work with them to enter into a no fee, no penalty compliance agreement whereby they could buy the property and then they agree to clean it up within a certain amount of time. And that actually is a real win-win.
Thank you, that's great information.
And so no fee, but administrative fees still need to be covered, right? No fines?
No fines.
No fines, but administrative fees, which is a small portion.
Right.
Yeah, very small portion of the total. So this has been great, thank you for pulling this item. I think we've gotten some good clarity here, and for the public, due diligence, right? That's the bottom line. All right, with that, looking for a motion?
Do you want to do public comment first?
Yes, that would be a good idea. Thank you Supervisor Bushnell. So do we have any hands up in the Zoom? Yes, 7454, this is your chance to speak on this item. I know you're punching star six, sounds like this morning it's a little troublesome, keep trying. 7454, this is your opportunity to speak. 7454, last chance before I go to the next person.
Chairman Drone, I think that's his second number.
Yes, that is his second number, isn't it? Okay, so we'll go to 5288. Oh, yep, 5288. There you go.
Hey, I think we went over the top of technology here, not my first rodeo. Just to let you know, this is what I do. If there's probably 10 people who bid on the most of these topics and for quite a few years have been buying these things, Truman Bowman used to use some, and I'm the top 10. I've been down in Mexico bidding on three properties with a construction crayon on a block wall I was building at the time. I find it extremely, extremely unlikely that your particular liens that have not been adjudicated to the courts are not just totally, unless you actually went through a process that went into the court system. I think it would take you maybe five minutes at the most to reach out to a competent land attorney and/or to a title officer. It used to be Debbie Provault, but I don't know whether she's available, but they could answer that question probably in five minutes, and I'm guessing your liens go away, the same as the second property, they would have the opportunity to bid. It's like any sale, if you have a second, a lot of times on these auctions and things, they will come in and they will outbid the first because they want to keep their interest in the property. So I think this is going to resolve itself rather fast. I think you'll find that, you know, later in the day, that could be answered. I do strongly approve of this process. I have multiple lots out there, which I paid very little for, and they're all currently available to be developed into tiny home villages. Some pretty nice lots for like $9,000. I do totally understand what your tax collector said, I did have Mr. Rotholom, you pulled one out at the very last minute, because the neighbor asserted that he had improvements on the lot, which was of course, in my opinion, no ground, but I bought the adjacent one to him, and now he wants me to sell him the one I have. But anyway, I think you'll find this goes very easily, like I say, this is what I do, I'm not an attorney. I'd recommend you consult a competent attorney in this matter and/or a title company, they may do it for free for you, the title company might, because you're the county. Thank you for my opportunity to give a little bit of advice on something that is my business or I consider part of my business.
Thank you commenter. Seeing no other hands up in Zoom, we'll come here to the audience today, is anybody here would like to speak on this item? Please step forward. Welcome.
Thomas Mulder again. I think a lot of these properties, I don't know, hopefully you can change some policy before the June 15th election. I think this would be a perfect opportunity to get some home setters out there in those mountains, keeping those watersheds clean, cleaning up the property, living on that property, and creating tax roll for the county, but also improving watershed and probably some timberland management and wildlife preservation, maybe even some field breaks along there. Could be really, really good. So hopefully, maybe you guys bring this back before you to look at some policies to, I don't know, find the right people, you know, some sort of waive the fees if someone's willing to live there for two years or a year or something like that, so that way you don't get someone just to try to buy them up like Monopoly cards, but someone that's really going to live there and take care of it. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you commenter. Anyone else here today wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for staff recommendation.
Second.
Moved by Supervisor Bushnell and seconded by Supervisor Wilson. And do we have our voting tabs up? Yes?
Thank you, motion carries 5-0.
Good job, Board. Thank you Nikki.
Thank you to you both.
Yeah, and thank you Supervisor Bushnell for bringing this out for discussion, appreciate it. Okay, with that, we are jumping into our regular agenda, and the first item we have is to consider supporting a proposal to apply the new name, actually, it's never been named, but the name of O'Hanial Creek to an officially unnamed stream that flows into Redwood Creek. And this is in the Willcut Territories. And I know there are many members of the Willcut Tribe that are very excited about this as they are slowly starting to rebuild their, their whole process and connection to the land. So with that, that's basically what's happening, it's a proposal being brought forward, and the organization at the federal level that looks after this type of stuff, the U.S. Board of Geographic Names, wanted to get input from this board on whether or not we supported this new name of an unnamed creek. So with that, Supervisor Bone.
Make a motion for staff's recommendation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, and again, I would prefer that we do this after public comment, but we'll go ahead and move forward at this time. And we'll go back out to the Zoom and see if there's any public comment on this. We have one hand up, and that is 7953. Welcome, star six, to unmute. There you go, welcome.
Hello, thank you. My name's Yolanda Latham, and I wanted to make a quick comment. I'm not only the descendant of Charlie Moon and Mini Tom of the Redwood Creek watershed, but I'm also the descendant of O'Hanial Bailey and Mary Woodward, all of the Redwood Creek watershed. First, I'd like to extend my gratitude to Steve Madron for reaching out to contact me and my family for input. I'm humbled. A collaborative and peaceful connection is always welcome. I consulted my family, and we wanted to share that we're in agreement with proposed name for the creek below Berry Summit. O'Hanial Bailey was an excellent sheepherder and contributed to Humboldt County in the Redwood Creek watershed in a good way. The Redwood Creek watershed is our ancestral territory for gathering, food pathways, and culture. We're indigenous to that region and area. Also, while I have your attention, I wanted to share that if we could look at some of the names of the other creeks, that would be nice, because I had read in the proposal there was one called Negro Creek, which seems very inappropriate and should be changed. And it probably has some offensive other terms in there in terms of the way things were named from back in the day, but if we could look at those, that would be wonderful. And also, and I just wanted to mention, there's three areas within the Redwood Creek watershed, the Willcut, the Hole Cut, and then there's different names, and then there's the northern side by Vault Hills, which is Chalula. But anyway, we're welcome, we welcome consultation, conservation, and respectful dialogue, and thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Seeing no other hands up in Zoom, we'll go to the audience here today. Would anybody like to speak on this agenda item? Please come forward. Seeing nobody in the audience here today, we'll bring it back to the board, and we do have a motion in a second, but is there any additional comments from the board? Supervisor Wilson.
It's just a question, I don't think it needs to be answered in this moment, but there was a comment and request from the commenter related to sort of the expansion of the concept with relationship to looking at, are there other names within this watershed and other watersheds that we should be looking at? But I don't really have the process for that. And so, I don't know, I don't want to add something to staff's long list of things to do right now, and I don't know if it's in our jurisdiction to do that, but I just wanted to kind of put it out there, if there are groups or folks that are interested in this, maybe this is, the signal here is, we're open to the discussion. Thanks.
Yes, thank you Supervisor Wilson. And as I understand it, they all basically go through the U.S. Board of Geographic Names. And there have been several lately, such as Sumay Park and Sumay Point. And I think there is also some movement around renaming of some of the ones that were named with the term squaw and other things in the recent past, so I suspect this is not the last of these. These are a lot easier when they're unnamed, whereas when they're named, it's a far more complicated process, but still, I believe they all go through this board, the U.S. Board of Geographic Names, not our board. Although they always look to our board to see what kind of support there is for that. So yeah, that's the process, and I think we will probably see an increasing amount of these coming forward. All right, seeing no other questions, clarifications, we'll go ahead and go to our voting tabs on this motion.
Thank you, motion carries 5-0.
Great, thank you, Board. Okay, moving right along, our next item is item number two, which is to consider revisions to the ordinance 2520 related to campaign finance. And I did bring this forward, and in your packet, there was a staff report as well as a copy of the ordinance, and I'm just going to read the intent and purpose of the ordinance. And this ordinance was adopted in 2014, and it relates back to the Political Reform Act of 1974. And the comment at the start of this ordinance, under intent and purpose, it states that "The purpose of this chapter is to ensure that the financial strength of certain individuals or organizations does not permit them to exercise a disproportionate or controlling influence on the election of Humboldt County candidates. To achieve such purpose, this chapter is designed to reduce the influence of large contributions, to ensure that individuals and interest groups continue to have a fair and equal opportunity to participate in electing county candidates and to maintain public trust in governmental institutions and the electoral process." I've gone through the ordinance myself, and I've identified several places where I think change would be good. But again, I'd rather just go ahead and bring it back to the board for discussion, clarification questions at this point, and then we can delve into any possible changes that the board might like to see. And what we're doing here today is simply having a first shot at discussing this and deciding whether or not we want to provide direction to staff to bring back a possible amendments to the ordinance at a future meeting. So that's really where we're at, at this point. So any questions, clarifications from the board? Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, considering, and I brought, in 2014, I brought this forward because we had no campaign reform. We had a lot of talk about it, asked a lot of people, nobody did anything, so I brought it forward. And that was to bring, I mean, back in the day, there was 10,000 contributions from Orange County developers, unions, organized other governments, bringing in $10,000 at a pop, and we all remember, I've never got a $10,000 donation. I just, I had 2,000 people, I think, donate to me in my first campaign. But I think what we did is, we went 1,500, what we did back then, and I'm sure you've talked to, this was a compromise because we have people that run countywide elections, sheriff, DA, not some clerk recorder, it's usually just handed down, and I mean usually, and if you look historically, but the sheriff, DA can be kind of contentious, and they're countywide. And so I look back on it now, and you made it so well spoken when we talked about raises and things like that, about $16 in, you know, six years ago is now $20. So with inflation and everything else, that 1,500, I know signs have doubled in price almost, I think, I just buy little stickers, I keep my old ones. Everything's gone up, advertising, everything's gone up. So for somebody that's going to do a countywide, and even to bring us down to $500, which is what the city of Eureka has to cover four square miles for ward election, and 3,000 voters, when we have to have six or seven times, contact six or seven times, this kind of takes the argument out. $1,500 was low, according to, I looked around, it was a good number, a lot of people, again, don't have anything, but with inflation, 1,500 was an easy number. And I don't know what your discussion came up when you talked to Sheriff Hansel or any of the countywide election people, but that was a number that everybody could work with, be fair, and kind of chase out the big money. The big money was the $10,000 donations that were coming in from the unions and out-of-town developers and things like that. So that's what was driving it in 2014, so.
Thank you. Supervisor Bushnell.
I'm just curious on that item, it says 500 as a max, is that something you just plugged in, or where did that come from?
Yeah, that was my suggestion in the process. You know, as Supervisor Bone said, this was a great thing that he and the rest of the board did in 2014, because there really was no, no controls around it whatsoever. And, you know, back in 2010, 2014, there was $250,000 being spent on a supervisor race, a couple of them. In 2018 and 2022, $150,000 was being spent. And there is a disproportion between candidates, you know, folks- And there is a disproportion between candidates, you know, folks, some folks are able to raise really big money with a lot of $1,500 donations, others are not able to raise that kind of money. So my thought was, there's a lot of really incredible people out there in our community, and I'm sure that some of them are daunted to even consider running because of the cost to run and pay for ads and all that kind of stuff. So I just thought it would level the playing field a little better to make it 500.
So I polled campaign contributions for this board, and except for Supervisor Wilson, which I didn't get his, everybody here has received more than $500, including yourself last year.
Absolutely.
So I'm wondering why, now that your election's over, Supervisor Madron, that you bring this forward? I'm curious.
Yeah, well, that's a good question, and I've been thinking about this for a number of years, and I didn't bring it forward simply because I'm not running again. Even if I was running again, I would support that $500.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, thoughts from the board before we go to the public? Yes, Supervisor Arroyo.
I'm curious, I know that currently there's a very, frankly, very confusing escalation clause for contributions, and are you proposing to take that into account as well, or what were your thoughts there?
Yeah, well, would the board be interested in hearing my thoughts on the several changes I thought might be possible considerations? Or do you want to hear from the public first? So I will answer that question after we hear from the public. Pardon, yes.
Are you going to hear from the public first?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Unless there's any questions, clarifications.
I just wasn't, this was a clarifying question, because the staff report only speaks to the change from 1,500 to 500 maximum, so I wasn't sure how that would be handled within that recommendation.
Yeah, so I look forward to discussion. It is an interesting provision that is very, not very well-known by anybody running for office, or even the general public, that there was what I would call an escalation clause in the existing ordinance whereby if $10,000 or more is spent on a particular race by independent expenditures outside of the committees, that then the maximum donation goes up to $5,000, which is kind of heading back to that 10,000 type of big money stuff that was discussed earlier. Independent expenditures are more complicated, I will say, and I certainly do not know all of the case law around all of that, but that was one of the things that also was concerning. I will say in this last race that there was more than $10,000 spent of independent expenditures in one of the races, but part of the problem is, there is also a clause that you have to report those things very timely, not only to the elections office, but also to the other candidates in any particular race. And that hasn't been getting adhered to by independent expenditure individuals, so there is code around that that's not actually being followed, and I think it's because it's a very confusing element, that what, suddenly if somebody spends a whole lot of money, then you can get even bigger donations, right? And there's a lot of thought around that on both sides, that maybe this was developed, and perhaps Supervisor Bone could speak to it, but maybe it was developed because if somebody, if $10,000 or more of independent expenditures happens to support one candidate or another, that maybe then the candidates having the ability to raise more money is a way to kind of compete with that, right? So there's a lot of ways to look at that particular one, and again, I don't know the case law around it, and it's more complicated. So with that one, I'm assuming if we wanted, if the board wanted to have that looked into more, that county council and our clerk recorder would delve into that more deeply and see what the case law is around that, and whether or not it can be modified or not, and those kinds of things, so. But we won't know that here today. I hope that helps clarify.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So with that, Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I'm going to wait until after public comment.
Okay, very good. I saw the finger go up. So with that, we'll go to the public, and is there anybody in Zoom with their hands up? I assume there is, yes. So we've got 5288. Star six, unmute. There you go.
Having a lot of problems with that cell phone today. Yeah, I was present when, and Rex gave you a very accurate thing of what transpired at that time and the reasoning. And of course, one of the first things I've done during this conversation that you've been having is reach out to a person who ran. And my feeling, my perception of this, is that they feel that the incumbent has a very large advantage here, and that they already have a donor base that's significant. And I'm not speaking for anyone specific, but my perception of what was communicated to me was that this is not to the advantage of someone who's running the first time. And so I would recommend you, you look at it from that viewpoint, and I'll be reaching out to other people who run, you know, I've had associations with other people who run, but I think that this thing probably should stay the way it is. I don't think it's broken. When I first got involved in this, my biggest donation has been less than $100. That's all what I do, you know, I don't want my name out there necessarily, and I just prefer to stay that way. I'm not a big donor, but when I first got involved in this, there were people like a certain rancheria that was contributing $25,000 per candidate, and of course, this put an end to that, and I think the, I think it's not broken, I don't think you need to fix it. And there are some other things Steve was talking about, which I'm not aware of, and maybe there are some loopholes that need to be dealt with, but the general level of an individual or group donating a maximum of $1,500, I think that's reasonable. So that's my input for today. Thank you for not being to speak on this topic.
Thank you, commenter. And just to be clear, if you donate $100, then your name, your address, your occupation, and your employer all get listed? It's if you donate $99 or less that you are not listed, so just for clarity's sake. Thank you, commenter. So I do not see any other hands up in Zoom. And so anybody here in the audience today who would like to comment on this item, please step forward to the podium, and you have three minutes. Welcome.
Good morning again. Thomas Mulder here. I actually agree with Kent. I don't say that a lot of times, but I don't think it's broken, let's leave it the way it is. I would consider this probably a long policy of, I don't want to use the term knee-jerk, but I don't really agree with trying to change this policy at this time. I could see that changing this policy now, hearing Kent speak, this could actually place a competitive advantage against anyone trying to run for a seat coming up. I know there hasn't been a challenger in Arcata area for a while, so, you know, it could be considered a competitive advantage. So I would ask you just leave it the way it is. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. And next, welcome.
Good morning. I wasn't planning on speaking with this, but I think I'm going to have to agree with Kent and Thomas. And, you know, the old adage, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, I think really, really should be utilized here. As someone who's ran two campaigns, and, you know, it is a pain to raise money, it really is, and to have a campaign that goes countywide is very expensive. And one thing that I think you need to also realize is that you're making rules no matter when your election is. In a presidential year, it is expensive to advertise and to run any kind of media, you know, during those times, as opposed to the off-years. And the sheriff just got moved to the presidential election, and so thinking, you know, five years from now, when that election does happen, it's going to be very expensive. And so I think having the same rules in place, it already is modified. I think the state has a $5,000 cap, and so if you don't have these campaign rules in your county, it defaults to that. And so we have a 1,500 one here. I think that's reasonable. Most of the donations do come in at $99, but there are people that do have the means to give a $1,500 donation, and also the argument for a person that's just starting out, you know, every single one of you up here have campaign donors and sponsors, and even a war chest may be built up from previous years, and you can carry that over. Someone that's new, you know, has to start from square one, and that's one of those things that is a constant worry, but I think that keeping it the same would make a whole lot of sense. So I appreciate the time today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here in the audience today who would like to speak on this agenda item? Please step forward, this is your chance. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll bring it back to the board, and I believe Supervisor Bushnell had wanted to comment, and then Supervisor Arroyo and Wilson.
Thank you. You know, when I, I didn't know anything about campaigning really when I decided to do this, and it was difficult at best to, first of all, ask for money, I'm not good at that, and I didn't run an expensive campaign. I don't have money or a war chest or whatever, you know, but I don't think that there is an issue, I am not in favor of changing this policy, I think it works well the way it is. You, you know, you, I think after, if you donate $1,000, you only have 24 hours to let that, you know, you have to turn that in right away, people are well aware of who is doing that. I'm just not in favor of changing something when I don't see, there doesn't appear to be a reason, really, that it's not working well the way it is, and it's just my, you know, personal thoughts, and so I'm not in favor of a change, and I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you Supervisor Bushnell. Supervisor Arroyo.
I actually wanted to invite our registrar of voters to speak to this item, who's here in the audience today, and I think may have specialized knowledge of what this would look like. Would you mind if we do that now Supervisor Wilson?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Well, I have some questions going through the thing that I think, if I could throw out there before, oh, sorry.
Mike, you might.
If I could throw out my questions in the mix before we.
That sounds good. Let's do that. We've got the request from Supervisor Arroyo in the waiting.
Okay, this is in no particular order, other than the order that's, they come in in the ordinance is read, so some of them are just kind of cleanup. They relate to how this, I think that the ordinance was written a long time ago and then edited in 2014, so there's language that's kind of old in here, and so I want to reference some of that as well as some of the substantial issues. First in here is, there's only one place where we, it goes into, where we have pronoun issues in here, I just want to point that out, there's just, it's on page 162, instead of his or her, just put the candidate. I think that we can modernize our language. The next thing is just the independent expenditures, or the independent expenditure committee is not defined in this ordinance as to what it is, like it's referenced over and over in here, and it's pretty important, relevant to the, what we're calling the, what is it, the expansion clause, or what do you, what do you call it?
Escalation clause.
Escalation clause, which isn't actually a term used necessarily in the document, we just kind of put it there. So it seems like we should have some definition around that, if that's something that is of some importance in this, in this piece of legislation. I also want to reference that if we change, if it's decided to change the contribution amount, and I'll get my thoughts on that in a minute, so I'm just going through, we would also then, there is parts of this ordinance that reference loans to candidates, and that is tied to the contribution amount, so we would have to understand that loans, as well as extensions of credit. So, which would be fairly interesting, because anything beyond 30 days, according to this, is considered, you can't have an extension of credit, and so anyone running a campaign will understand, like even if you buy some signs for, I don't know, $3,000 or $5,000, if you go beyond the extension of credit for that, then that would be considered in this thing as a violation, if it's over the, according to the language in here. So we just have to like, think about the, think about the details.
Sign that, okay.
Well, I'm just.
I'm just saying, I don't know if I'm giving credit.
Well, sometimes, sometimes people are running campaigns through their, like, through their, like, campaign consultant, or whatever it is, there's just things, there's just way, there's just, just doing business, in the world of just running something like this, I just want to make sure that people understand, it's like, those limitations should be addressed, and be, and those will be tied to this. So that's something that needs to be considered. And then going into, again, the disclosure requirements under the independent expenditure committee stuff, which again, is just like a paragraph that never defines what an independent committee is, and then there's this very old language, such as in 2181-11B, disclosure of major contributions, and then it says, "Any mailing financially supported by an independent expenditure committee shall indicate on the envelope containing the mailing." So I'm just saying, we don't even see people send much in the way of mailings in envelopes, right? They're usually on cards. And also, in this, this is a disclosure requirement, this is the only place where that disclosure occurs, as opposed to signs, radio, print, TV, billboards, web-based, email, phone, whatever it is, the only disclosure we have in here with relationship to contributions from an independent committee only come in the form of a mailing on an envelope. So again, a bit dated in terms of that. So if we, if we're interested in having disclosures of the independent committees, then we should update that, because it also says, "The name of the committee should be on this envelope, as well as the names of the top three financial contributors at the time of the purchase of that media at that time." So I think that's a pretty good idea. If we're trying to address the issue around these major contributions from independent expenditures, which are outside our committees and outside of this process, this would be a good place to do that. It also leads to the question is, can we, as a county, limit contributions, make contribution limits to independent expenditure committees? And I don't know the answer to that question, but it sure would be helpful to know that. So that goes to the notice of the independent expenditures, and in here, it says, "Anything over $1,000 or more during the election cycle shall notify the county registrar of voters and all candidates running for the same seat by telegram, facemile, or any other electronic, or any other electronic means." That just speaks to how dated, I'm going to say, I'm going to put out there, I'm probably the only person that sent a telegram in, that I know, in this room, but any case, and it was not from the United States. So it speaks to sort of the dated nature that this, that this has. So I want to speak to those issues, and then on the, on the $500, $1,000, $1,500, whatever it was, I do remember during the conversation at the time, there, of 2014, there was a proposal that $500 was, was one of the numbers that was thrown out there at sort of the, as was 25. And I'm just putting it out there, that it was, it was in consideration. I, I feel like, I mean, I have to tell you, the smaller number is probably a bigger detriment to a, to a seated candidate, you know, and an incumbent, more than it is to a challenger, I just, from my experience, because you, I'm just saying, by the nature of the power structure in which we are in, our, our ability to speak to interests that have the means is embedded in the work that we do. And so I, from my perspective, I think, I think it's, it gives challengers a better space to lower this number, and so I favor that. But, so I differentiate, and maybe it has to do with the scale of the, you know, the election that I participate in by district versus by county. But again, by county, you have the proportional number of humans that, you know, you have five times as many people that can actually contribute to that. So those are my thoughts. And now I'm thankful that we have someone who has some knowledge of these items here today. Thanks.
Thank you Supervisor Wilson, and I'm going to go ahead and throw my pieces out now as well, since we've heard from the public, and then we'll hear from the clerk recorder and back with the board and see where we want to go with this. But the first area, well, I agree, his or her should just simply be candidate, keep that simple. The first change was, in the description on page 162, it has a definition of person to include just about everything you can imagine except for independent expenditures. And again, there really isn't any definition anywhere in this ordinance about who, who is independent expenditures, other than it's money that gets spent on a campaign outside of a committee that's independent, and so by nature... that's independent. And so, by nature, that's what it is. But there is certainly no discussion of any limitation on money spent by independent expenditures. So, the first change that I would recommend is perhaps include independent expenditures in the definition of a person so that it's all equal footing. But that's just a thought. The second change is to change the 1,500 to 500. And again, you know, back in 2014, 2010, a quarter million dollars was being spent on these campaigns. In the most recent election in 2022, one of the top campaigns, at least for Supervisor, was $150,000. And I was the incumbent. And, you know, people always talk about the advantage that the incumbent has. But money can overwhelm that. You know, frankly, I was trying to compete with airtime and loaned my campaign $20,000 just to try and compete. And I was still pretty much overwhelmed on the airways with that 150,000. And so, it's not just being incumbent. The money can absolutely have an impact. I noted that in Mendocino County, Ted Williams didn't collect a dime. He basically just paid for the filing fees and those couple of things that you gotta pay for your candidate statement on his own. And he raised no money and spent no money and he won with 86% of the vote. So, money doesn't always matter. Incumbency certainly is a strong hole card, so to speak. But I do think that money has a great influence and I'd like to see it reduced. So, that's the second change. And then the third change would be this whole escalation clause. For me, I'd like to see it just go away, but that's just my thoughts. But again, again, I don't know about case law regarding that. And I assume the clerk recorder may have some input on that one for us. Moving on to page 166, on the bottom of that page, under notice of independent expenditures, it talks about anytime you make a donation of $1,000 or more, you have to report. Well, if we were to change the donation of 500, then we would want to drop that one also to 500 just to be in line with the rest of the ordinance. And that's pretty much what I have. So, with that Supervisor Arroyo, any follow-up questions before we bring the clerk recorder up?
Thank you. Since we're all saying our, saying our bit now, I, I thought I'd clarify some of my thoughts before we, before we turn it over to our, our registrar of voters. So, I, I concur with a lot of what's been said about defining independent expenditures. I did want to note that is defined by the Federal Election Commission. And so, that, that definition does exist out there. But I, I know I certainly found this confusing as a candidate and, and didn't fully understand it until I dug into it a little bit more. So, I agree that if we're going to have definitions, it'd be helpful to include that in there. And, you know, which there are defined terms for a lot of the other, other elements of this ordinance. I, I hear the, the concern about, you know, creating an advantage for existing candidates and disadvantaging incoming candidates. But I also believe that trying to kind of just bring that number down a little bit, I don't know what the right number is, whether it's $1,000 or something different. But something that, you know, I, I talk to people all the time who are interested in running for office and who are not politically that well-connected but are interested in, in making a difference or in serving their community, who are terrified about the idea of having to raise so much money to be able to compete and to be able to get the word out there and feel that, that, that disadvantages people who are not born and raised in Humboldt County, who do not have a large network of people that they know here. But they may be bringing other gifts to, you know, potentially to the public sphere. So, you know, I, I don't know what the right answer is. I look forward to kind of continuing to discuss it. But if people feel that the expectation is a little bit lower and easier to meet and easier to get on the same footing as others, I believe that could potentially encourage more people to run for office, which we, you know, we often see that there aren't very many candidates in the field for many of these races. And that's something that I hope we can consider as we make, you know, make our decision here. And, you know, I'd be in favor of just removing the independent expenditure clause entirely. My understanding of that is that, you know, if something along the lines of somebody formed a special, you know, essentially committee to a Natalie Roya Sucks Committee. And people started donating to that. And people started, you know, potentially being able to donate large sums to that, that I would then be notified that people had donated to that and get their names, which is interesting. And then, you know, that, that, that would raise my ability to, to fundraise. And so, I, I understand the intent there. And perhaps to fundraise to create, you know, an opportunity to correct misinformation, that kind of thing. I, I get that intent there. One of the things I'm wondering about is if we can cap any donations to independent expenditures comparable to what people can donate to other campaigns. So, independent committees, you know, having that same cap. I, I believe the answer is no, but I'd still love to hear about it. So, anyway, those are my thoughts. I, I'm in favor of finding some kind of meat in the middle place on this one so that we can kind of bring the, the total cost of elections down a little bit. And also, to be frank, you know, I had to raise a lot of money in my campaign and we all kind of get into that position where we end up having to raise a lot. And when I think about, you know, some of the people that donate to campaigns are people that also donate to other charitable causes in our community. And like, gosh, could that money be going to something else? You know, to be able to get into office, you kind of have to, you have to do the whole thing. You have to get out there and ask for money and then use it and get the word out. And, and yet, that's a lot of money going to something that I think could go to a better, better place.
Thank you. And Supervisor Bush now.
Um, thank you. Through the chair. So, obviously, you know, some language cleanup could, could benefit. I don't quite understand, you know, reducing the amount to $500. So, do we think that's going to be less money that's brought in? Or is it just going to be more people giving $500, which would be that max amount? So, I, I don't know if that's going to lower the amount that people bring in. And, you know, to Supervisor Arroyo, you know, leveling the playing field, I don't know. I, I ran, I, I did this because I care about my community. I wanted to be here. I didn't really know what I was getting into as far as campaigning went. My opponent had spent three, four times the amount I did. And so, I think if you want to run and if your intent is good, I think everybody's intent is good. But if you're, you know, you really have that heart and you want to do it, you'll do it regardless. I don't think, you know, if you're deterred, if you want to make a difference and you say, oh, I'm not going to do this because I have to raise whatever X amount of monies, then really you're not there. You know, I, and that's my personal opinion. That's not, you know, I'm sure you've heard from people as well. I just don't know that lowering the 15, and I don't care either way. Like honestly, I just know, like, if you're running a, a countywide campaign, it's a lot, it's a huge area. And I think a lot of money is spent on campaigning. I think it's kind of ridiculous at times. And I agree with Supervisor Arroyo. I think that money can be well-spent somewhere else. Does that mean that if we lower this to $500, it's going to change what people bring in? Probably not, really. And so, I, I don't know if that's going to be effective or if there's going to be, you know, instead of, I don't know, 50 people donating $1,500, there'll be 500 people donating $500. The amount will maybe, probably be the same. But I do agree with Supervisor Wilson that there is some language cleanup that could happen.
Okay. Thank you for that. You know, we can look at the data from 2010, 2014 and what kind of money was raised in Supervisor raises as compared to 2018, 2022. And it cut it in half, dropping it down to $1,500 as a maximum donation. Cut the total amount of money being spent on these campaigns in half, right? So, that's some data that we do have on the impact of lowering the donation value. So, with that, we've had a nice, robust discussion. I doubt that we're done with that. But if the clerk recorder would come forward and share your thoughts on this process or any other background you might think is important for us to know. Welcome.
Thank you. So, one of the best parts of my job is that I don't create legislation. I just administer the legislation that you all create. And so, on, on many of the issues at hand, I don't, I don't have a position whatsoever. 500, 10,000, that's, that's your discretion and that's a, that's a philosophical county discussion to be had. I, I can provide some feedback in terms of how it's all administered and, and how the public engages with it at every level. Everyone from, from state, from congressional candidates down to special districts come through this office and abide by, by not all the rules that are the same, but some of them. And it's a really complicated process. It's really difficult for anybody, even somebody that's doing this year in and year out. I'd ask, I'd ask you all, how many of you all have submitted amendments to your campaign? I, I have too. It's, it's difficult stuff. Of everything that's been mentioned, the, it's called a special circumstance in the code. I think you all call it the escalation clause. That's the part that, that concerns me the most. That's the part that, that professionals don't understand. Some of its language, having the definition be included would help. The ordinance pulls a lot of its backing from the FPPC. And so, the reporting structure, it's kind of built on the FPPC's reporting structure to function. And, and that works technically. Explaining that to somebody that's starting off is, is a very difficult thing. Explaining that to somebody that's, that's running multiple campaigns is still difficult. And, and we're seeing 100% failure rate on that particular clause. The only time that I'm aware of, and I've done a little research, that it's come into effect, it wasn't reporting until, it wasn't reported until after the election. And so, that escalation clause went into effect and in one race, two candidates had their maximum contribution increased and nobody knew about it. And so, I, I wonder if, if anything is broke and needs fixing, I imagine that, that is. It doesn't really do much for us except complicate matters. I, I know the argument of, of it's there in order to give Supervisor Arroyo the ability to combat the Natalie Sucks campaign. But it's, it's, it's saying that, that if somebody wants to raise a ton of money, that gives the candidate the ability to raise more money. It, it, it seems like secular reasoning to me. If, if that money is to be raised, it's to be raised. And I don't, I don't see how this, how this helps things one way or the other.
Thank you Supervisor Wilson.
So, I think that there was a question as to whether, and I'm not sure if you have the answer, but do we have the capacity within our local ordinance to limit campaign contributions to an independent expenditure?
That's something that I'd, if, if we were to explore that, that I'd like to work with county council on and dive. You're talking about a type of law that's very nuanced and complex and esoteric. And so, I'd love the opportunity to explore that if that is where you want to go. And to rely on county council to, to give the, the legal backing. I'm not an attorney. I don't give legal advice.
And to add on to that, do we have the capacity or, I mean, do we have the authority even to do what we have in ordinance right now, which is a relationship to disclosure? You know, what, in terms of the independent expenditures? So, right now, we have language for disclosure of independent expenditures. And I don't even know if we have the, the authority for that either.
The three-day bid is the part that I'd question. Like I said, it's only ever happened once. The reporting mechanism is through the FPPC's process. And so, you would, we would need to look at the FPPC's disclosure framework for that. Independent expenditures have their own reporting structure. They file forms in the same way that, that you all do when you receive contributions and make expenditures. And so, that's the mechanism that this ordinance relies on. And so, yeah, we'd have to look at, at that ordinance or at that piece of FPPC code that, that impacts that.
Okay. Those are my questions. Thanks.
Supervisor Bone.
Well, it's. Yeah, as an incumbent, I think you have an advantage. They always say you have an advantage. And, you know, we can sit up here and make promises and say, we're going to do this and do that and never do it to different agencies and things like that. So, we, we are a distinct advantage. It's just if we follow through. And that's what gets us elected or not get elected. I, I know we were just talking about $16 being $20. I've, I've heard it repeatedly. And now, eight years ago, or nine years ago, we, we went to 1,500. So, I'm sure that's been eaten up quite a bit. And I just have a hard time, like you brought up Mendocino. Mendocino has no limits. They follow the state limits. So, I mean, they can do anything they want. He was very lucky. He didn't really have a candidate. So, I mean, it's, it's easy to pull, I can pull 10 of those out. But what I'm saying is, somebody coming in, I can, I can make all these bold promises up here and really put a disadvantage of somebody that wants to run against me, you know, next year. But I, I still think the 1,500, you have to remember, we brought that down from a $10,000, an unlimited number basically, to $1,500. And there was quite a squawk. And you said, well, 500 was mentioned, 25, 5,000 was mentioned. So, I, I, and, and the funny thing is, and it's not, I'm, I'm very fortunate as now we said, somebody new to the area comes in there at a disadvantage. You're, you're, you're right. I'm, I do 40, 50 auctions a year, everything else. I mean, I can, I, if it goes to 500, I can, you know, if I have to raise a certain amount, I'm, I'm sure I've got friends and people that believe in what I've done for the community and will further do for the community. That's not the issue. I'm thinking about people down the line. I don't, I don't think about me. And I think, and I, I think 1,500 nine years ago was pretty extreme. We had a lot of people wanting to, talking about campaign reform. I know since I got on the board, they were always talking before they were, nobody'd step up and do it. So, I did it. Took a big whack out of it. I, and for the people, we heard our sheriff talk. I'm sure he's probably talked to the DA. These people do. $1,500 is, is not that much. I don't think it's going to, I can't be bought for 10. I can't be bought for 25. I've got money. So, I don't know if I can be bought at all. So, I don't understand about keeping the influence out and everything. So, I think what we do is we do our job up here and we get reelected. But I'd like, I, I'll stay at 15. Again, I, I can count pretty well, but I'll, I'll stay at the 15 because I, it has worked and there has been no problems. The independent expenditure committees, I think there's been more problems than one because you've been able, there's three or four, I think, nobody could chase down names. There was ads placed for, there were television ads done by some candidates that were never shown on their expenditures. There was no media whatsoever, but they were on TV a lot. I mean, I don't know how you find all that. And a lot of that, we follow the FPPC guidelines because they enforce 99% of it. I don't know if we've ever done an enforcement action except remind people, hey, you've got to do this, you've got to do that. Because we've had instances in the last three or four years where people filled out their, their qualifications wrong and we didn't go back on them and stuff. So, I, you've got your hands full anyway. And it seems like, and I don't know, that this, this sounds really good and it's, it's something you can wear and everything else. But it seems like there's going to be a little bit of work or a lot of work involved. I heard county council, I heard this, I heard that. Is this really where we want to send our staff when we're looking at what's going on around our county? I mean, is this, is this an issue? I have, nobody's come to me on it. I don't know if it's come to, to an issue. It, it's a, it's a, it's a feel-good, look-good. But I mean, I didn't do it that way nine years ago for that. I just thought it was time to reel it in. And like you said, it seemed to reel it in, in some locations and, and we could go from there. But I, if there's not a problem and we don't have to spend staff time, because staff time, every minute we spend on staff time takes away from building improvements, mental health, homeless, all of this. Because we all have, because there's no grant for this. So, I, I'd like to be more selective on where we're spending our staff time too. If, if there's not a foreseeable or a glaring problem.
Understood. Thank you Supervisor Bone. You know, it seems to me that there is some agreement, that there is some language in here that's outdated. There's clearly a, a lack of understanding about the independent expenditure process. It's not being reported properly. There are some problems. And so, I think, I mean, my preference would be that we have a motion and a second to direct staff. And I realize that's expensive, but I don't think we're looking at a bottomless pit here of any kind. I think it's a limited amount of effort to be able to come back with some alternatives. You know, that would be my recommendation that, you know, we go ahead and take the items that have been brought forward by the board as a whole here today and take each one of those as a possible alternative. Should it stay 1,500? Should it be something different? That's one alternative. Well, you need, we need to learn more about the independent expenditures clauses and reporting requirements before we do anything. And we're not actually going to take any action today unless we decide to direct staff to do some investigation and come back. So, I mean, that would be one way we could handle this, is just to direct staff, to do the research and come back with. the research and come back with, you know, these half a dozen, seven or eight different alternatives that could be considered. I would hope that cleaning up the language, getting rid of telegrams and a few things like that should be totally non-controversial. But there were a number of other items and I could list mine once again, but I think staff have been taking notes on what those issues are. But that, that would be one way that we could proceed would be to have a motion to direct staff, to do the investigations and then come back with a list of alternatives to consider for these different items we've been discussing. Supervisor Wilson.
To staff, okay, I, I think this is the, which, through the chair, which staff is going to lead, is going to lead this, is going to lead this effort? And I have a few comments on where I think, you know, the, the biggest holes in this legislation are.
Uh, yeah, council and I were just discussing who the most appropriate staff would be. I think county council could possibly work with elections. Frankly speaking, my office is in the middle of putting a budget together. So I wouldn't have the capacity to do this work until, until the summer, after June, when we adopt. So I would defer to council on, on his bandwidth and thoughts on what would be most appropriate.
County council.
This would be something that county council's office would work together with elections, with the elections department to come back with the alternatives that you've mentioned here today.
Do you see this as a big time dump or limited?
I would say that this is a relatively large project, considering that we're going to come back with seven or eight alternatives, as was just discussed. That could take, that could take some time.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I don't see that it absolutely needs to be done tomorrow. And we are entering a campaign season and so, you know, even changing it in the middle of all that is somewhat complicated, I would say. And, and that's not my intention. I just wanted to see if we could clarify, bring this into the 2023 arena, basically. Any other thoughts Supervisor Wilson?
Follow-up.
And then Supervisor Bone. Okay, and then Supervisor Bushnell and then Supervisor Bone.
Okay, so from my perspective, the influence of money in our democracy is always an issue. It has not gone away in, in the, in the history of this nation. And so it is something we have to continuously work on. And the campaign limits, the contribution limits here is one issue, but I, I kind of feel like the bigger, bigger glaring hole has to do with the independent expenditures and the things that it, it drives or the issues that it can create within these, within these campaigns moving forward. So I'm happy to make a motion to, to have staff review all of the items that we've talked about here. I don't know if we need seven or six or seven alternatives per se, but I think, I think that, that the board, I'm going to just put out there, I think the board understands that there are these issues around the independent expenditures and, and sort of the, the language around that is, is very, is kind of mushy and could bring that back. I think the only place where we have disagreement is with relationship to the campaign contribution amount. And it looks like there's kind of a range bracketed between 500 and $1,500. And anything that's brought back by staff could just have a blank spot for that. Although I will say it has some domino effects with relationships to loans and extension of credit, which would someone have to just look into to make sure that we're not making those elements impractical. So. That's my motion. My motion is to ask staff, is to take a look at this item, this ordinance and bring it back with some clarifications and some options. And I'm not going to put a number on those options. I think, I think, I think staff can be practical about that.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I, I seconded it, but it was while he was still talking.
So we have a boiled down motion by Supervisor Wilson and a second by Supervisor Arroyo and we have Supervisor Bushnell and Bone in the queue.
Um, thank you. I just would like this board to consider that if we're going to direct staff, that we're not wasting staff time. We've identified a lot of things here and I think Supervisor Wilson just kind of broke it down, but kind of unclear to me as well on what items you guys want or this board wants looked at. So if we send staff back, which staff is going to be council, who is also short-staffed, can we maybe, I don't know, bring back all these items and then we're going to hash this out again? And what if that doesn't get adopted? They've wasted a ton of time on nothing. And I, I just, I feel really bad for staff at times, getting a mixed signal from this board. And I don't know how we clarify that, but I don't know. It just doesn't seem right to me.
Supervisor Bone.
Been the victim and I guess recipient of independent expenditures. We're going to tell people that spend money against us or for us to come in and tell us all about it when we can't figure out who the heck they are anyway. I mean, it sounds great. It really sounds great, but they go out there and they use, and in this day and age, it is so much easier with the internet and everything else. And especially if you want to blanket everybody with Western Union, it, it's getting so much easier. So what I'm trying to figure out, I mean, the independent expenditure, it's, it's pretty easy, but it's, I mean, it's a, it's an expenditure for a communication that expressly advocates the election or defeat of a clearly identified candidate, which is not made in coordination with any candidate or their campaign or political party. I mean, it's, and the reason it's so broad is the FPPC, because then it includes your unions, your fraternal organizations, whatever group or just a bunch of people that get together. It's all encompassing. It also includes PACs, but PACs are pretty good about notifying what they do and we don't really notify what we, what we're talking about doing with PACs here. So I, I tend to agree. We've got, I, I think the language and, and through council, can some of things like telegram and he, she, or, or just candidate, can that be cleaned up without, or does that have to go through an action?
That would have to go through the formal ordinance process at this point.
I, because I, I understand the easy part to bring it up into the 20th century. We, we, we took the shortened version back then and we actually kind of piggybacked on Sonoma County quite a bit and used their legal reference. So we didn't tax our staff at the time. And that was the closest one we had because nobody else had campaign reform. Mendocino did and everything else, so that was who we could talk to and refer to. So I, I wouldn't mind cleaning it up, but again, I mean, we're short three people at county council. We're, you know, we're, we're, we're sitting here asking for stuff and I, and, and we've got it out there. The, the optics are really good and everything else. But I, I think when we talk about it, 500 is what Eureka does for their little part. And I mean, I've got a pretty good size, you know, county. I mean, I've, I've got some advantages. I have three terms with the signs and everything else all saved up. So I don't have that and things like that. But I don't know. I, I'm just, I just hadn't heard we had any problems. The independent expenditure, we haven't had a problem with them for a while in a few years either. I mean, we, we kind of, we've all can point fingers who we think was doing it, but so. I, I would like to stay at the 15 and clean up the language and make it as easy as possible with staff. And that was kind of where we came at with, when it was 500 to 25, we kind of met in the middle, so.
Great, thank you. I will point out that the city population of Eureka is approximately equal to a district. So 500, 500. Supervisor Arroyo.
Thank you. And I hear the concern about staff workload and, you know, we haven't, at least in the motion, I did not hear a specific timeframe. So I, I respectfully, I do think we've heard that there are concerns and problems with lack of clarity. So it's not that there's no problem at all. I can say that, you know, I, I have personally experienced that lack of clarity. And, you know, in, as, as, you know, we're entering another election cycle, people are starting to reach out and, you know, talk to folks about running for office and, and that, that issue of the fundraising piece, you know, comes up kind of constantly. So it, it may be that, you know, folks aren't hearing it in their circles, but I'm hearing it in mine. So, and as we, you know, talk about having a functional participatory democracy, I think at least having clarity about what procedures people need to follow, it's already incredibly complicated. So at least making it more clear is key. So I, I'm hearing one alternative, which is a cleanup and simply, you know, modifying terms like telegram to come into, you know, this, this period of time more accurately. And then, you know, defining the terms that are in the ordinance itself, that's, that's, you know, to me like the, the easiest option to implement. And then we're also, you know, it sounds like folks are interested in seeing some different amounts. I would be interested in that proposal to leave it blank and come back and talk about what we think that, that could or should be, as well as getting into more definition and potentially restrictions around independent expenditures. So those are the two alternative scenarios I'm hearing. But I did want to ask through the chair, could you speak to your staff's capacity and your office's capacity to work on this? Because I imagine that you would be looking at some of these changes potentially first and then working with county council from there.
When it comes to this issue, I'm, I'm the staff that'll be working on this project. My office is staffing up at the moment, so, so we have our hurdles to overcome in terms of, of getting to full capacity. But I don't think this needs to be so complicated. I, I don't think we need to reinvent the wheel. Supervisor Bone's suggestion is something we do in this line of work frequently. We see what our peers are doing and find best practices and that, that takes very little staff time to do. And so I'd feel comfortable, I'd feel comfortable with my office spearheading the grunt work and then passing on things to county council once, once it gets to a point where we need to see a legal feasibility or liability.
Thank you for that clarification. And, and we keep saying staff and I, I suspected that we were really talking about was our fellow elected official here putting in some time as well. So, thank you.
Very good. Okay, well, it's a great discussion. Appreciate that. And so I would say let's go ahead and vote. Supervisor, or C A O Hayes, did you have? Okay. Let's go ahead and vote. I believe our voting tabs should be there. Nikki, yep? We're voting on a motion to direct staff to, which is county council and the registrar voters to take a look at these few changes that have been brought up. Some of them are just changing a few words. Some of them are looking at the amount. Some of them are looking at the independent expenditure process and what we can do or not do around that. So I think simply put, that's the motion in front of us as I understand it.
And what's the amount?
The amount is not declared. We're saying that it would be somewhere between 500 and 1,500 and we're going to leave it blank and we as a board would ultimately decide that. That would be one issue we would take on and decide when the report comes back to us. Okay, any other clarity?
Chair Madrona.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Supervisor Bushnell.
I just want to thank you and stating that I feel much better with you saying this doesn't need to be complicated. There's some just cleanup stuff. I really do appreciate that. And yeah, I really appreciate that statement a lot.
Great, thank you. You don't, okay, roll call please. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Madrona?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Affirmative.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone? And Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Great, thank you very much, board. Thank you, clerk recorder and county council for your feedback on that.
As chair, could we have a five-minute break?
Let's take a five-minute break. We'll be back here at, we'll call it five minutes till, and it's not till 10, it's till 11, I believe. That clock needs to be updated. All right, folks, welcome back. We are done with our recess. Thank you for allowing us that break. And at this point on our agenda, we have item number I-1, which is a new appointment to the Samoa Peninsula Enhanced Infrastructure and Financing District Authority Board. And I believe we have to recess as a full board and then bring the other board forward. Is that correct? No? Okay.
Not in this case.
Okay, very good. So Economic Development Director Dare, Dare, please.
Chair, can I make a clarification, please?
Yes, please.
So we're not all on that board, but do we all vote to put someone new on that board?
Yes, so today on this item, you're not convening as the public finance authority for it. You're just convening as your body to appoint a member to be seated on it.
Okay, thank you so much.
And primarily this is to replace the outgoing Supervisor Virginia Bass.
That is correct.
Probably a logical move here. So.
And I'm happy to give some context or background, or if you feel comfortable, we can go right to your appointment.
Give us the brief version.
Okay, I'll give you the brief version. So the Samoa Peninsula Enhanced Financing District, often referred to as the EIFD, was formed after a two-year-long process and three public hearings where your board approved a resolution leading to the formation of the EIFD. The purpose of that district is to utilize captured tax increment. This is not a new tax. It uses tax growth to finance capital improvements related to infrastructure development that will create economic development opportunity and benefit to the EIFD geographical area, which is defined in the infrastructure finance plan that was also previously adopted by your board. The work for the EIFD has just begun. The filing for formation of the EIFD with the Board of Equalization just occurred last May. Legislation requires that three members of your body be appointed to the Public Finance Authority, which governs the EIFD, along with two members of the public. Virginia Bass was formerly a member of the PFA, Public Finance Authority, as appointed by your board. However, legislatively for the EIFD, your terms coincide with the length of your terms on the Board of Supervisors. With Virginia Bass terming out, that has created an opening. Presently, there are two supervisors who are serving as appointees to the EIFD, Supervisor Wilson and Supervisor Bone. The recommendation today is that your board appoint a third member to replace Virginia Bass.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Bushnell.
Um, I just would like, is Supervisor Arroyo, are you interested?
I sure am, yes.
So I know like we like to go out to public comment, but may I make a motion?
Yeah, this is inappropriate.
Okay, I would make a motion that Supervisor, Supervisor Arroyo is appointed.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Supervisor Bushnell and a second by Supervisor Arroyo to appoint Supervisor Arroyo to this finance district. Any other questions, clarifications from the board? Seeing none, we'll go out to the public in Zoom. Do we have any hands up in Zoom?
No, Chair Madrona, I see no hands up.
No hands up at this time, so we'll come here to the public. Anybody here today that would like to make comment, please come on up to the podium. Seeing no movement in the building, we'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Wilson.
I just want to thank staff for, and the district for really putting this together to begin with, to get this process started. I think it's important to note that the investments of the district over the last decade after acquiring the pulp mill site and the, and the recent pay, payoff of the new market tax credit loan, as well as the forgiveness of the loan from Cali PA. We're talking over $20 million that has been brought into that space. It's preserved a ton of infrastructure, including gas and electric and water and sewer and warehousing and the installation of a 750,000 kilowatt solar system, just, and so much tenants that I just, this is what we need to do to move that forward is, is within this, within this context. And so just thanks to everybody for keeping the ball rolling.
Okay, seeing no other hands up here at the board, I guess we'll go ahead and, do we have our vote tabs, Nikki?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, board. Well done and welcome to the new committee assignment. So with that, we're going to go to our next item, which is I-2, Updates and Action Related to the Emergence of the Offshore Wind, our OSW industry in Hoboken County. I believe that's also going to be Director Dare.
It will be both of us presenting today, chair. Maybe we can keep it as. It will be both of us presenting today. Chair, maybe we can keep it as fast as the last one. That was great.
Good luck.
So Scott Adair, Director for the County Administrative Offices Economic Development Division. And with me, Sean Quincy, Deputy County Administrative Officer with the CEO's Office. And we will be co-presenting on this item today for offshore wind, and we'll be screen sharing a PowerPoint presentation, which if we could put up on the screen. Great.
All right, great. Thank you, Scott. Chair Madrona, members of the board. Come before your board today because we have come to yet another, we continue to come to junctures as we look to help support the development of the offshore wind industry, where we're needing board engagement, board direction for many different issues. So quickly, just by way of background, should be no news to you, but the, the offshore wind development is in support of the state and federal goals. The state goals to develop offshore wind energy are to develop two to five gigawatts of energy by 2030, which would power 3.75 million homes, 25 gigawatts by 2045. The federal goals are to develop 30 gigawatts of offshore wind energy nationwide by 2030, and specifically 15 gigawatts for floating offshore wind by 2035. Floating offshore wind is the type of energy that would be developed in, off the coast of California. As a reminder, this is where we are in the process, the federal process of developing wind. The lease area has been identified. They published the lease notices and, lease notices for the geographic area in the ocean that would be leased. The final sale notice and the auctions were held in December, and there were two developers here who purchased those lease areas. And the federal government, BOAM, the Bureau of Ocean and Energy Management, is still in the process of revising the bids, reviewing the bids, excuse me. And once that process is complete, the leases will be granted. And then there will be a process after that to survey the site assessment plan that the developers have developed. And then there'll be a couple of years of site assessments and surveys. After that, the Concept of Operation Plan process will begin. So we are a couple, they're many years away from actually turbines being put into the water. This slide is to just quickly review the actions that your board has taken relative to offshore wind. In May, your board directed staff to engage with local communities to develop, explore and develop local supply chains related to offshore wind. In October, your board authorized a professional services agreement with outside legal counsel to help us get through this process. And in November, your board adopted a resolution expressing the values related, that your board will hold related to offshore wind development.
Thank you, Sean. So board members, what have your staff members been doing since that time in which you directed staff to learn more about the opportunities related to workforce development and supply chain development for offshore wind? I can tell you that staff from the Economic Development Division, in partnership with staff from our county administrative office and other agencies, have been working to become educated on the various phases of the project that will occur over the next 10 years and through the operation and maintenance phase of wind operation. It's very well studied through federal agency reports, through agencies such as BOAM, which is the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, and ENREAL, which is the National Renewable Energies Laboratory, as well as studied by other sister communities along the East Coast who are already engaged in offshore wind efforts, that offshore wind will have a significant economic and workforce impact for our community. That economic impact likely to be in the billions of dollars over the entire operation cycle of the wind turbine area or wind energy area, and the workforce impact to number in the thousands of jobs. We've been studying these various phases so that we can understand better exactly what those workforce and economic impacts are going to be. We've been able to use data and other analyses that have been completed by other federal and state agencies to develop a solid determination in advance of a more comprehensive deep dive workforce analysis, that the port and workforce, or I apologize, the port and the offshore wind development will create somewhere in the neighborhood of 3,400 direct jobs, in addition to temporary and induced jobs. We know that as part of this equation, not only are we expecting for job growth, but we're expecting for a change in our population, as there are a number of workers within the workforce who will be aging out of the workforce during the period of time that this project comes to fruition, as well as new students and natural population growth that will be occurring. Next slide. So that understood, we understand that there is a great work, a great deal of work that needs to be done in order to prepare our existing workforce and/or attract new workforce to accommodate the multiple phases of the project, and also to understand the sequencing thereof. Not all the same types of worker classifications are going to be needed during all phases of the project, and we expect to see peaks and valleys in the type of labor and the skills and classifications of that labor that will be needed to support the project. So the county's Economic Development Agency, in collaboration with College of the Redwoods and Cal Poly Humboldt, through the Humboldt Workforce Coalition, which you may recall your board created during a, what we could call workforce fiscal crisis, these three parties are working together to identify strategies and to identify programmatic needs to support the workforce and supply chain needs around wind and port-related activities.
Another issue that staff have been continuing to work on and engaging on is the community benefits agreement process. In the final sale notice for the lease areas, there was a provision that allowed developers to claim bidding credits if they agreed to engage in the community benefits agreement process and execute community benefits agreements. As we've stated to your board before, there are two different types of community benefits agreements related to the offshore wind process. One is a 5% credit, basically for those who use the geographical space or who harvest resources from the geographical space that is leased out in the ocean. A lot of folks have referred to this as the bid credit that is reserved for the fishing industry and tribal, and tribes who use that area. The second community benefits agreement that is part of this process is the General Use Community Benefits Agreement, and that is designed basically to enable some collaboration between the developers and the general community that is going to be impacted by development of offshore wind. I'm bringing up this slide because there is a lot in this process that we, that we're going to need board direction on and continuous engagement on. And there are recommendations later on to develop ad hoc committees from your board. And so this is some of the parameters around community benefits. I should also mention that related to the port development project at the harbor, there's been significant community interest in engaging in the community benefits process with the developer there. There's still more engagement needed to determine the next steps. There's also potential where the county could enter into agreements with each of these developers for impacts related to the county. There's a lot of legislation related to offshore wind. Your board has already adopted the legislative platform that expresses your board's wishes on offshore wind legislation at both the state and federal levels. There's significant engagement that the county needs to continue to do to advance the county's interests. There's a lot of, there was a lot of funding that came down in 2022, especially at the state level, to, to develop the process or to develop offshore wind. And there's, there are additional bills that have been introduced this year, coupled by our local delegation related to the industry. On the federal level, there's the RISE Act that got reintroduced this year. It's basically a revenue sharing bill between developers and local communities. And locally, there could be some regulations that the county wants to pursue related to the industry that the, that we're proposing an ad hoc would engage around. And there are also relationships with local agencies. One of these recommendations is to authorize the county to enter into agreements with the Harbor District, City of Eureka, local cities and local tribes around how to engage in community benefits process and other things related to offshore wind. And we would propose that the ad hoc committee would help develop those agreements.
So in the prior item, I had indicated that the work of the Samoa Peninsula Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, or EIFID, had just begun. And this truly could be considered the first real project of the EIFD toward infrastructure development and creating economic benefit on the EIFD or in the EIFD geographical area. The Public Finance Authority recently directed staff to partner with the Harbor District on consulting with an outside agency and contracting with that agency to perform an infrastructure sequencing analysis. So much more comprehensive than simply a gap or needs analysis of the infrastructure, which needs to be either developed or maintained, but to give an order and direction as to where investments should be occurring related to that infrastructure development. This is presently underway, and the Harbor District and EIFD staff, which the EIFD is staffed by the Economic Development Division, have engaged with Moffett Nickel for this purpose, and we're presently moving forward with this work.
All right. And that brings us to recommendation number one, which would be to approve the formation of two separate ad hoc committees to work with staff and community stakeholders on matters related to offshore wind. As we talked about earlier, one ad hoc committee we're proposing would address workforce and supply chain related matters, and the second ad hoc committee would address community benefits process, legislation and infrastructure.
This second recommendation relates to a grant recently received by the Economic Development Division from the California State Employment Development Department. Our division recently received a grant of $851,500 from the state, which is directly related to offshore wind and port development activity. The recommended budget, which was remitted to and approved by the state for this funding, was to include contracted services for comprehensive stakeholder mapping, role and responsibility, gap and capacity analysis. This report would be shared with the entire community and with those stakeholders who are engaged in offshore wind. It would also be inclusive of a offshore wind and port development workforce SWOT gap and needs and sequencing analysis, as well as a similar analysis for supply chain. Again, this would not be redundant to or duplicative of the more global, either industry level or state level analyses, which have already been done by BOAM or ENREAL or CEC, which is the California Energy Commission. These analyses would go into much more granular detail about the needs at the Humboldt County level and would be used to develop programmatic strategies to support the labor pool and local businesses. This funding would also be used for civic business worker engagement analysis and strategy development, so that we can ensure that there is both distributive and procedural justice around benefits which may be arising and other opportunities for work which may be arising out of offshore wind and port development. And then will finally be used for an update and modification to the county's local regional workforce development plan, which ultimately comes before your board and to the state for review and approval. We've also included therein a small amount for legal services, and the balance of the funding is to be used to cover staff time related to offshore wind, port development, collaboration and other activities, as well as travel, education, training, not just for staff, but also for partner agencies within the community who may be economically disadvantaged, but who are a stakeholder and seeking to participate in those types of activities.
And recommendation number three is to provide direction and authorize staff to execute agreements with the Harbor District, City of Eureka, local cities and tribes around collaboration for port and wind development. As we work through these processes around offshore wind, we need to formalize some of our working relationships with some of these agencies to clarify our roles and responsibilities, so that we're all working on the same page. And through those agreements, we could also drive forth some of the board's priorities as well with some of those agencies. And then the, I believe this is the final recommendation, the fourth and final recommendation is to, nope, I'm sorry, there's one more after this. Direct staff and the corresponding ad hoc committees to return with a specific action plan and strategic plan for civic engagement and community outreach related to wind, and return with recommendations and a strategy to support a robust community benefits process and work with workforce partners and developers to explore opportunities and needs surrounding workforce and supply chain development.
And finally, at the end of this month, there is a very large meeting of the minds occurring for stakeholders and partners within the offshore wind industry in Baltimore for the last week of March. This is an event where all of the major players in the offshore wind industry will be in attendance, including both of the wind developers for Humboldt's two wind energy areas, as well as Crowley, the selected port developer for the port. The other attendees will also include legislative partners, federal and state partners, and local communities along the East Coast, leadership from those communities, staff and elected officials in whose community's offshore wind development is already occurring. Staff is making a recommendation that your board, after the formation of the two ad hocks, choose to send at least two representatives, at least one from each ad hoc, to this meeting, given the opportunity to learn from, be educated by, and network with other public bodies and public agencies who have gone through similar efforts to what we're going through now. It's also important to note that should your board choose to do so, which is staff's recommendation, it would be further recommended to cancel your last board meeting of the month. As I understand it, there is already an absence that will be planned for the end of the month, and if your board were to send two members, then you would be without quorum in order to hold a meeting. So in summary, do I take the summarization? Great. So the summary recommendations today is to approve the formation of the two separate ad hoc committees, dividing the work of offshore wind, since there is so much work to be done, authorizing the county administrative officer to execute on the over $850,000 grant with the state of California, provide further direction and authorize staff to execute on agreements with the Harbor District, with the City of Eureka, who has also expressed interest in partnering, and/or other local governments and/or tribal agencies, tribal governments for collaboration on port and wind development, to direct staff and corresponding ad hoc committees to return with those strategic plans, which will arise out of the specific analyses, which I mentioned earlier, including returning with expanded recommendations for a strategy for community benefit process, which also could include project labor agreements, as well as working with workforce partners and wind developers to explore opportunities as well as working with workforce partners and wind developers to explore opportunities and needs surrounding workforce supply chain, community benefit agreements or investments, and for your board to consider ad hoc participation in the International Partner Wind Forum in Baltimore at the end of this month. And staff is available for any questions that you may have. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present today.
Great, thank you very much for this very informed presentation, appreciate it. Any questions, clarifications from the board? Before we go to the public? Okay. Public comment, great. So we'll go to the Zoom, and do we have any hands up in Zoom? Yes, we do. 5288, this is your chance to comment on this item. There you go, welcome.
Ken Sawatsky here, and I strongly would applaud if Rex Bone would be one of those that would go back to this meeting and directly communicate with the Crowley family. I think that we need to be represented from Rex's viewpoint on that. The perception here, I talk to, I presume to act like I talk to Mother Nature, and all she could do is laugh. I think the odds of this happening are probably 100 times stronger that they will happen in a teragen format again, which Rex may agree or not agree on that one. That may came back, Frank Basich is no longer here, and I think that could be a project. But the chances of this going forward with the current changes in energy are, in my opinion, are many people's opinions next to none. The, I'm going to be reaching out to my people who talk to the people at MIT. I think there's already far superior and far environmentally friendly sources of power that are in the works, which probably could come to fruition in a timely manner way before this thing even gets to be moving on in any kind of direction whatsoever. Crowley is a very interesting company, you might wish to vet them. They do port development, they've done a little bit of wind now. Nobody's done wind of this nature, other than a little few of them, I think 13 or something off somewhere. So the technology isn't there. Boom's put a big study out that it looks like possibly the electrical lines could disorient all migrating fish and things, which is a big concern, and mammals in the ocean. And I really don't think this thing's going to happen. I suppose you're going to go on. I do, did want to make mention, anytime you're going to change a meeting, that should have been agendized separately to delete a meeting rather than being attached to something that really may be the reason for it, but isn't relevant. I kind of object to how that's agendized. Good luck on this one. I have, and everybody I talk to has next to no thought that this thing's going to move forward. That's just, you're going up against Mother Nature, and I don't think it'll work. So thank you for the opportunity to speak. Sorry to be such a downer on this one, but I'd love to see Rex back there talking to the Crowley family. Maybe let them know there are other places other than just Harbor District property to put this on, some places which are in the opinion of anybody who knows about port and things, much, much better locations to put a large dock in, which many of us feel may be used to...
Thirty seconds.
Basically end up tapping into the offshore Strategic Oil Reserve when we have a prolonged war with China over there. But anyway, that's just what happens. They've had tanks through before, they're very good at what they do. So hope you have an opportunity to speak with them, Rex. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, commenter, and I see another number, but I believe it's the same speaker, so no two bites at the apple. So we'll come back here to the room and see if we have, yes, we have folks who would like to come up and speak. Three minutes, welcome.
Hey, my name's Dave Watson, I'm here representing the Humboldt Builders Exchange. For those of you who don't know, we represent more than...
I'm sorry, hang on, Hank, there we go.
There we go.
There we go.
All right, now it's official. Hey, my name's Dave Watson, I'm here representing the Humboldt Builders Exchange. For those of you who don't know, we represent over 300 local construction and tradesmen in the area. And I just wanted to say that we would like to voice our support for the collaborative effort that has been proposed here, and that we actually look forward to working with everybody involved to try and keep as many of these jobs local as we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else here today who would like to speak? Yeah, welcome. And if you do, if there are others, please come on up and join the lineup. Welcome.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Lewis Neuner, I'm the decarbonize the North Coast advocate for EPIC. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to talk today. To achieve our state targets for greenhouse reductions, the development of new diverse, sorry, sources of renewable energy is essential. We need clean, reliable energy and lots of it. EPIC understands and appreciates the important complementary role that the offshore floating wind farm could play in meeting this demand. For offshore wind to be successful, however, we need to ensure it works for Humboldt, for its vibrant and diverse people, and for the environment. While we believe that it can work, success requires timely and thoughtful community engagement, early on and throughout the all stages of the process. EPIC strongly supports the convening special ad hoc committees to generate this early engagement and build an offshore wind industry we can all support. To the extent we can be useful, EPIC and I would like to express our support, and we're happy to assist these ad hoc committees in any way possible. This work will offer a valuable addition to other existing efforts, such as stakeholder engagement by the Core Hub and its network, the California Energy Commission through AB 525, and work by Congressman Huffman's office. Thanks again for the opportunity to speak, and have a wonderful day.
Thank you, commenter. Anybody else here today? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Wilson, and then Supervisor Royal, and then Supervisor Bushnell.
This is a lot.
Again, electricity is important.
This is a lot, and I appreciate the staff's work on this, and I appreciate the notion that, you know, this is just another step that we're doing in vetting this for our community and figuring out where we're at, and then advocating. I think there is a lot of, of understanding that as a community, we're, I think, as I've said before, it's like we're leaning into this, but our feet are firmly planted in our interests and our, and our needs. So where some sees the opportunity and how we might leverage that, we also have to be mindful of the impacts, how we mitigate for those, or really ultimately try not to have them as much as possible to minimize them. So I think that this is, this is just a good step forward. I'm glad we, I'm glad we brought back forward the resolution that we put, that we had before. I think it still stands, I think, I still think the language on it is still important, and I think the engagement is good. So I'm happy to support what's in the staff report. I'm happy to engage in ad hoc committee number two, which is the offshore wind legislation, infrastructure development, stakeholder engagement, and community benefits. Been engaged in all of those efforts pretty extensively so far. I don't think I have a choice of, of not engaging in those in, in inability to do my job, especially having one of, you know, having a district that is in an impacted zone. So appreciate that, and happy to hear what others have to say.
Thank you, Supervisor Royal.
Well, I'm the one that's not going to be here on March 28th, and so I appreciate staff bringing that forward and making that recommendation. And the reason I won't be here is I am taking a personal trip, and I will happen to be in Denmark. And I am actually, while on that personal trip, on my own dime, I'm going to go see some offshore wind installations all around Denmark. Now, most of those are closer to shore. There is development by one of the winning bidders for our lease areas that's in the North Sea off of Germany, and if I can possibly swing going to see that, it's, it's out at sea, so it would be an aerial observation or on a boat. So that seems less likely. But I will be checking out and hearing from a couple of companies that are not located, you know, here or proposing to develop here, but who have developed wind energy in Denmark where this is much more common, and hearing about their, their experiences. And, you know, there's a lot of differences in the way that infrastructure is developed there, but I still think it's insightful to see some operating wind energy, you know, operations. And then I will also, I'm also making an effort to go see one of Nordic Aqua Farm's aquaculture facilities in operation while I'm there as well. So I hope to bring back some insights there, but otherwise, I think this is all really excellent. I have been participating in Core Hub meetings and working with the Peninsula Community Collaborative for many, many months leading up to this, and talking about wind energy with them, and particularly the folks in my district on the Samoa Peninsula, who are, you know, really what we might consider the frontline communities, the ones that are, you know, right adjacent to some of this proposed development. So I look forward to continuing to engage in that way, and I am really appreciative of CIO and Economic Development staff who have really detailed the activities in this resolution that I think are, yeah, extremely on point. And, you know, there's a lot we don't know right now, but I am also appreciative that we have, I would say, broader community engagement efforts with this proposed development or developments, and also appreciate that EPIC came to say that, you know, you're in support and favorable. So hopefully, we can learn from the past and be moving forward with, with some good community engagement around this, and happy to serve on ad hoc committee number two as well.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you. Thank you to staff for bringing this item forward, and thank you for EPIC. I want, I want you to consider to add workforce board development to your list of people. That would be great. And with that being said, I am interested in ad hoc number one, workforce, as I'm that person on that board from this board, and also I am interested in going to the conference. I would like to state that, and I really appreciate all the efforts that have been done so far, and the very detailed report was great. I just want to say that. And I'm happy to make a stab at a motion if...
Let's hear from the last supervisor, maybe?
Is there someone else ahead there, Hank? Okay.
I'm just curious, just wanted to make the opportunity. Supervisor Bone. That's true, I have not talked yet.
So I, I don't know if I'd be the last supervisor if we're going to be accurate. Yeah, I'd, I'd serve as the other member, because I was workforce development for so long, and now I'm the alternate. I have worked on, or within 100 yards of Humboldt Bay, most of my life, probably 95% of my life, both on infrastructure, both on acquiring, both on shipping. So I've got, I do have a little bit of knowledge, I've got a little knowledge on wind. So I, and we're not limited to one or two of us going back, so that's, I don't think that's an issue. I'd like to see a little bit more of it. I think I go into it with my eyes a little not as wide open, because there's so many other pitfalls and things we face that for this to come to fruition, so I, I pray this happens, I hope like hell this happens. I think it's one of those things, but I've been around for a lot of these things over the years, and they seem to, we seem to get greedy and eat ourselves up, and I just, hopefully as we sit here and I, I kind of look at this almost as the cannabis industry. We all said, we can take a little bit more, we can take a little bit more, now everybody wants a piece of it. I'll like this, if I can have a piece of it. I think what we should do, we're all going to, in the long term, get a piece of it if you're worried about. Economic impact to a county, across the county, doesn't matter where it's at, will benefit our county, both in environment, safety, health, and welfare issues. Don't worry about the check you're getting today, worry about the check you're going to cash in 20 years. And to say, I want my chunk of change now because I deserve my chunk of change, I think you should balance that and look at it with your eyes wide open rather than being focused on just yourself. And I mean, I, I see that happening, and that's just, but I've seen that eat up a lot of industries and fail a lot of, on the East Coast now, there's, there's leases on the East Coast now asking for relief because it's too expensive to facilitate. So I think we need to be aware of that. But I sure want to see it happen.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone. Well, you know, this is wonderful, the way this is settling out. I heard two supervisors willing to serve on ad hoc one, and two supervisors willing to serve on ad hoc two. That certainly makes that easy, and I'm assuming that those supervisors will decide whether they can go back to Baltimore or not. We don't really need to deal with that. Anyone that wants to go, I assume, can go. Yes, so CIO Hayes?
Yeah, we, we can coordinate any board member who does want to go. I believe in my conversations with each of you beforehand, that at least two are definitely interested and potentially a third. So that does pose a challenge for the 28th, and so we do need clear direction from your board as to the status of the March 28th meeting, and should that be canceled, we'll return next week with an agenda item to memorialize that.
Very good. And so, yeah, there's five recommendations here for us to deal with, and that was the fifth one. Supervisor Bushnell, here.
Well, I would make a motion that we appoint Supervisor Arroyo and Supervisor Wilson to ad hoc number two, and that we appoint myself and Supervisor Bone to ad hoc number one, and that we bring an item next week to not have a meeting on the 28th, and the rest of it, staff, staff recommendations.
That covers it.
Second.
So we have a motion by Supervisor Bushnell, and a second by Supervisor Wilson, and final comment, Supervisor Royal.
Does the motion also include adoption of this resolution? Oh. Oh, that was a previous action? Okay. I, I didn't, sorry, I thought this was part of the, I had some comments about the statement about the being California's historically largest fishing port, but I guess that's water under the bridge now. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll hang on here for clarification from the CIO.
One, one point of clarification we would just like from your board to ease staff when determining which committee is most appropriate to attend different community engagement meetings would be to, to provide staff with direction as to which ad hoc will govern when there is overlap of responsibilities, which, which has and will continue to occur on occasion.
So that's an additional item, your one clarification from our board on. Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you. I guess I would ask from staff what that recommendation would be.
I, I think probably deferring to ad hoc number two is most appropriate because it does have a bit of a broader scope, and so that would be my recommendation, but of course, I defer to your board.
So myself, I agree with that, to, to avoid Brown Act, right? So I would make, include in my motion that if overlapping meetings were to happen, that we defer to ad hoc number two.
Seconder, do you agree with that change?
Yeah, and, and we can, we'll talk about it later, but I think, I think that sounds good, I just want to make sure that, yes, I agree.
Yes.
If you have a thought, maybe could you get it out there?
Sure. No, I was just, I was just processing ahead of time about the conversation that would happen, and I was just, and it seems like that would work out fine. And, and what I am really saying is that wherever possible, I think we will defer from two to one where it's appropriate and reasonable, absolutely. I want to make sure we're not...
So I, I think that the obvious, if it's workforce related, and there are two, and they're calling for two, that we would use our common sense and know where to go that way. But, I mean, that's my thought process, is the other two ad hoc and Supervisor Bone feel okay about that?
I see a nod from Supervisor Royal and Supervisor Bone, sounds good.
I have a comment though.
Yes, yes, good. And I would say that it's my understanding that more than two can attend a meeting, they just can't engage in the conversation or vote. Is that correct? Not that I want to confuse anything, but sometimes people want to just go and observe, as long as they're not making faces or in any way trying to intimidate or affect the outcome.
It would depend on the specific circumstances of the meeting and the participation from the... the members that weren't on the ad hoc committee. So it would be something that you would want to consult with council about prior to attending those types of meetings.
Very good. And, yeah, not to make it confusing. So that makes it clear. Thank you. Supervisor Arroyo.
I think the, the main place that, at least in the conversations I've been having so far, where I could see this coming up, is, you know, like this week, there are a couple of Cor Hub related community benefits meetings. And ad hoc two pretty clearly states that it includes community benefits. And there's been separate workforce development meetings with the Cor Hub. And so that would be clear and separated. But then there are also Cor Hub wide meetings where it's like all, you know, it's updates about where we are in the process regulatorily and things like that. And that's where I could see there being some confusion about who might attend. And so I don't think that there needs to be a lot of complication, but we may just need to coordinate through, I assume through the CIO, about who's going to go to what when. So some of them are like clearly defined topics, and then others are a little bit more broad.
So there is always the option of one ad hoc member going from each group if that, if there is a complication and it involves two different subjects. And I could see one from each group going, one from each ad hoc group going, and then updating the other ad hoc member.
That situation would become a little bit complicated because of the possibility of a serial meeting. Because if one, if one board member, or one board member from one of the particular ad hocs then goes back to the other board member on that ad hoc, there could be a serial meeting in that situation, because there would be four board members basically talking about the same decision.
So would it be, just for clarification, I, I was understanding that that falls into place when two members of the board speak with each other? Or does it go with, and so if Natalie and I were to have a conversation, and then she went to Mike and said blah, blah, and I went to Rex and said blah, blah, that would be definitely a problem. But if we are attending a meeting, and we kept our comments focused on the meeting and not each other, what, what would you say about that?
Just for clarification, so with regards, so you're saying that you would be speaking just to Supervisor Arroyo regarding that particular meeting, and then there wouldn't be any further conversations with the other board members on the ad hoc committees?
How about we can probably get this worked out?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely work this out after the meeting.
Yeah, Supervisor Bone.
Yeah, my word. What, when we talk about in the staff, the other agency involvement, I notice we have Cal Poly Humboldt, and then we have Humboldt State University sponsored programs. Is there still Humboldt State University sponsored programs separate from Cal Poly? And I'm just trying to do a little cleanup since cleanup's such a big deal. And then the other thing is, is I noticed the other agency, we've got some of the workforce, but we don't have the Builders Exchange mentioned with their 350 contractors and stuff. So is, are those things we should clean up? So they are involved? I know they are, are involved, I hope, but they, so people know.
Yeah, Supervisor. So sponsored programs still does exist as a separate entity of Cal Poly. We've not received notification that their name has changed, because Humboldt State University Sponsored Programs Foundation is their legal entity name. So I imagine that they would have to go through a similar process as Cal Poly to change their name. So we've referenced them as per the contract that we have with sponsored programs, which is as written Humboldt State University Sponsored Programs. But we, if you want to add some language to clean it up, you know, i.e. Cal Poly, we could do that. As far as Builders Exchange, we're working very closely with them. Our staff has met with Builders Exchange leadership, also with the representative, Dave, who's in the room today, gave public comment earlier. They are definitely one of the stakeholders that we're referencing. Part of the stakeholder engagement analysis that was referenced earlier is part of that 350,000, which would be spent for studies, is to identify all of the important stakeholders and, and title holders, stake and title holders, who have a share in offshore wind report development, so that we're not leaving anybody out, so that there's distributive justice around the process, so that one opinion from Cor Hub, or from Epic, or from Builders Exchange, that they all have equitable access to the table.
Thank you for that. And I just want to thank all four of our board members for agreeing to serve on these ad hocs and work on this very important issue for our community. So thank you for that. And I would like to be on ad hoc number three. No, I'm already on a lot of ad hocs. Any rate, thank you for that. And I think we've reached the end. Supervisor Arroyo.
Sorry about that. I just want to make sure I'm clear. So there's several additional staff recommendations that were outlined in the staff report. Do you feel that we've captured those with the motion at this time?
It was moved that all staff recommendations are included.
Okay. Sorry, my brain is going in a bunch of directions at once. Thank you.
Good to be clear. Okay, with that, I believe we can go to a vote. We have our voting tabs up.
Thank you. Motion passes 5-0.
5-0. We're on a roll here today. Fantastic. Okay, we have one more item on the agenda before we go to closed session. And that is item number three, ratification of the local emergency proclamation due to consecutive major winter storm events commencing on March 1, 2023, which have resulted in large accumulation of snow, impassable roadways, down trees, disrupted utility services, damaged and flooded roadways, mudslides, and damaged structures, and dead livestock. Such damages exceeding available counter resources. And we have Sheriff Hansel here today. We're not catching a break yet. I mean, this is just one disaster after another. But welcome Sheriff Hansel.
Sheriff Madron, thank you for having me here. Yes, this is the third disaster in the past three months. And so our county is still recovering from the earthquake, the January winter storms, and now these winter storms. Our County Office of Emergency Services, our county services in general, and all the cities are really struggling to maintain right now. And that's why this disaster declaration is, proclamation is really, really important. And we have been included in the Governor's State proclamation as well. And I know that Governor's Office and the OES is working to get our federal designation for these winter storms. And we believe that we will get that based upon a lot of different factors throughout the state. And, and so we're thankful. We haven't been as impacted as other parts in the state. The Central Valley, San Bernardino, other areas have really been affected. And, but we have our own issues and problems. Just across the Mendocino Humboldt line, we have Highway 101 that's got a significant slide out. And so it's, it's real, you know, detrimental that we keep Highway 101 open. Caltrans assures us that they're going to do everything possible to keep 101 open, and to make sure that that roadway does stay clear. And, you know, there's no bypass around that 101 area. So, so they have things shored up. They're going to hopefully do everything possible to keep that. But there's county roadways that have been affected by this winter storm, as well as immense costs that have been accumulating from the response from the very get go. And so it's, it's really, really detrimental that, that we keep working together and, and try to, you know, help solve these issues through, through the state and local declaration.
Thank you Sheriff Hansel. And I want to thank you, all the deputies, OES Director Ryan Derby, all of the Public Works crews, Caltrans, Cal Fire, PG&E. I mean, this has just been all hands on deck now for three months. And I'm sure people are getting very tired, and yet they still go out there and they do everything they can. And Supervisor Bushnell and Supervisor Bone, thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the work that you've both been doing to try and help all of our community that have been stranded, cattle stranded, horses stranded. And without your help, all working together, we'd be in a lot worse shape. So thank you all for your incredible dedication. Supervisor Bushnell.
I just had a clarifying question. The slip out down by Cooks Valley, that's completely in, inside Humboldt.
I believe it was in Mendocino County though.
No, it's completely inside Humboldt.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, just, I just, I don't want people to get confused on where it is. So it's right at the end of the two lane in the Humboldt County, in Humboldt County, before you go onto the four lane.
Gotcha. Thank you for clarifying.
Yes, yep, yep, yep.
Gotcha.
And then just, just also, I, I personally, Sheriff Hansel, you, you know, you filled up a lot of my calls, and I really want to thank you and your staff. Public Works, I can't say enough for Tom's team. I am thankful that he lets me reach out to his workers that, his supervisors that are in my district to get updates. And, you know, along with the list that Steve, our Supervisor Madron, stated, I also want to thank the community members, because we had so many community members that took their own cats, took their own graders, you know, when Public Works needed help and said, can I, I will help, and checked on their neighbors. I just, I don't think there's any, you know, I don't want to leave anybody out. And so just, our community is resilient when it comes to disasters, and we've proven that over and over, especially since December 20. I really ask community members to be patient, especially with the roads. You know, they're exhausted. Everyone's exhausted. And so, yes, I understand, and I thank everybody on this board, that things, they want things fixed now, power on now, everything right now. And that affects your life. But we are tired. Everyone is tired. And so just to be a little bit patient, and we're getting, we're going to get to you, and we're addressing things as they come up. But it's just so fastly moving. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Great. Supervisor Bone.
And I think, I don't see him here, but it'd be nice to recognize Ryan Derby was recognized Sunday night. It was very nice as citizen of distinguished citizen of the year by the Elks Club. And it was just taken out as somebody that's put a lot of effort back. And he's, we've got our money's worth out of him. We don't pay him overtime. So he's great. No, we've, he's done a great job. I got to really say, I get, I get mentioned a lot. I just happen to hang around Michelle a lot. She, she put a lot of efforts together. We spent a lot of time up there. I do have to mention, I'll do Valley Pacific Petroleum, 537 bales, 40 ranches. I got a call Wednesday from Zach Frick and says, hey, can we pay for the hay? And so they picked up a little more than $10,000 for the hay bill, which, which is a huge thing, because we were going to charge the ranchers and have to break it all out. But it allowed the hay purveyors to just have one bill. So that'll make things easier. Saturday night, I talked to the battalion chief, the battalion chief for, in 1989, when they had the original hay drop, Cliff Chapman, he's got videos and everything else. And he sat there, he says, back in 89, we just paid for the hay. And I said, back in 89, there was a buck and a quarter a bale. So it, it worked. We have a lot of loss. Supervisor Bushnell had livestock losses. A lot of people, when this melts out, it's going to have losses. But everybody she thanked, they, they did step up. But the big thing was, CDF, Coast Guard, completely out of the norm. They don't, they don't have any rules for this. But they all said, we don't have rules that say we can't do it, I think is what the exact statement was. So they jumped out and did their job. So that, that was great. So.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Wilson.
Yeah, I think I mentioned this before, like when this first was starting, I did have reach out and phone calls from constituents that were a little bit impatient. I don't think they realized the, the magnitude of this. I still get, as is part of our job, customer service calls. We do a lot of customer service work. And so there's a lot of calls for service. But I have to tell you, in terms of reviews with relationship to customer review, very high. I'm saying I got, I have constituents really going out of their way to let me know how appreciative they are of the roads crew. And, and they've just been overwhelmingly supportive and understanding. And, and they have, you know, as community members have had to come together. There's great photos out there of, if you look, of Neeland School being completely under snow and having to close for a week, and maybe more, but digging themselves out, getting their roofs cleaned off. They have had a bit of damage. And they've never seen this much snow, at least, you know, people who are alive today have not seen this much snow up there. And, and again, I just want to shout out to the road crew, Tom, and can you let them know that they're, they're just getting rave reviews for their, for their work. And I just wanted to, thank you, let everybody know that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Supervisor Arroyo, and then Bushnell.
I'll just add on to this. I think everything I needed and wanted to say has been said, but I just want to voice my appreciation as well. Thank you both for taking on the initiative to make sure that, you know, we address those needs as creatively as possible. Thank you. Thank you, Tom. And, and so many unsung heroes within this whole operation. So, you know, I know this is certainly outside of Station Humboldt Bay, or Sector Humboldt Bay, excuse me,'s normal wheelhouse. But, and they will probably never get the hay out of the little bits and nicks and crannies. I'm just kidding. They did it immediately. I know those maintenance crews are on it. So, and, and huge thanks to the National Guard for stepping in as well. And that additional capacity was so needed. So a few of us will be traveling southbound by that massive slide in the next couple of days. So hopefully, the road holds. But I think this, you know, this action is necessary to help us take advantage of any of our additional resources that we can. So thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you through the chair. So I also just want to say how awestruck I was with the National Guard, Coast Guard, and CDF. And I had the opportunity to be at the Hell Attack Base. And just, those men and women, amazing, amazing. And from the bottom of my heart to the ranching community, there's nothing worse than having your animals stuck and not being able to feed them. And I just, from the bottom of my heart, can't say enough gratitude. I also really want to do a shout out to Lieutenant McCandless, Highway Patrol in my district. She's amazing. Her crew's amazing. She's very diligent about updating me. There was a lot of snow in the southern Humboldt area, and the freeways, along with Caltrans and Highway Patrol, did such a great job in trying to really keep those freeways open and not keep Humboldt isolated. And so I really appreciate Caltrans and Highway Patrol as well. Like I said earlier, there's just no amounts of thanks. It's really a community and, and county based. And so I know I'm going to jump again, but I'm going to make a motion that we accept the, the declaration of emergency. And thank you, Sheriff Hansel.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Yeah, it is a lot of appreciation going around all the way. And we're going to have to check on the roads in Monterey, because I know the Paharo River jumped its banks and blew a levee down there as well and other things. So we'll see how travel goes. So with that, we'll bring it to the public and see if there's any public comment. I don't see any hands up in Zoom. And we'll bring it back here to the audience here today. If anybody here today would like to speak on this emergency proclamation, please step forward. And seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for a vote. Sheriff Hansel, please.
Just say one thing. I appreciate this board. You know, being in this position is very difficult. And I know you all have a lot of pressure on you, and you receive phone calls. You've all been very supportive over the last three months. And you've, you've given us good questions, and you brought things up to us. We're able to address it. But we couldn't do our job without the support of you all. And, and so I appreciate you giving me the information for us acting on it. And it's been great. And I do want to thank three people that really made a lot of things happen this last week. Kurt McCray, Cal Fire, our, our, our division chief here, was outstanding. And he was on board from the very beginning. Mark Heigl, the commander of Humboldt Bay Sector, Sector Humboldt Bay, he's the commander that said, we're going to get this done. Mike Dara, his XO, was the guy that made it happen. And, and then Don O'Keefe's the law enforcement chief for Cal OES. He's the one that approved the Cal National Guard to come in. And he approved that mission, and he made it happen. And our Cal OES folks have been absolutely wonderful to work with. They've all come up from Sacramento, helped us with the earthquake and through the storms. And they've been just huge advocates on the state level. We couldn't do it without them. So thank you. And I also want to say, there's been questions about the hay drops, as far as, you know, why aren't you prioritizing life issues, you know? And we have. Over the last week, we've done numerous rescues with our Snowcat and four-wheel drive vehicles and using private vehicles. In petroleum, we use In Petrolia, we used people with, with the bulldozer to try and help us access different residences. And we have our deputies out there giving supplies to people, cutting wood, stoking fires, all those things that have been really, really outstanding. It's a real team effort. I'm really proud of this community. So thank you for letting me say that.
Thank you, Sheriff Hansel. And I think, you know, once we catch a break, we will. I mean, things will change and we will catch a break before the fire season starts up in July or August or whenever that does. This year has, sorry, this year has absolutely presented us with a great opportunity to, once we get a break, to revisit all of these various emergencies and really update, you know, our binder, our sheets that say, in an earthquake, here's who you call, here's who you contact, in a windstorm, you know, et cetera. I think that's the opportunity part of this and I look forward to working with you and OES Director Ryan Derby and our staff and other board members to really use this opportunity to kind of refine our responses and have that more, even more available as we go into the future because this won't be the last emergency that we have here in Humboldt County. So look forward to that. Supervisor Bushnell.
Thank you. I just, I want to say one thing. Along with what Sheriff Hansel said, you know, human life is always first. And if you have questions whether that's being done, please reach out and don't assume that it's not. I commend Travis Rogers has been so busy and like was happened in Petrolia, the same happened in Rancho Sequoia and on the Alderpoint Road. The Kircher family assisted the sheriff's department to get in six and a half feet of snow to get people out of there. And, you know, recognizing that our responsibility is first to human life, but secondly to our animals that we domesticate and put behind fences, you know? So I think, I know we prioritized right. And if you have questions, ask. Ask what's being done. It's really important. Sheriff Hansel's always happy to answer and so is anybody on this board.
Absolutely. Yeah, keep an eye on your neighbors. Keep working together. And we do have a motion in a second, I believe, at this point. We've had robust discussions, so we'll go ahead and go to our voting tabs.
Thank you. Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff Hansel. And I want to thank this board. We have a perfect five oh voting record here today. It's not easy and it's not that it's so important to have five oh, but what I observe is that this board is working really hard to respect each other's differences, to listen to each other, and at the end of the day, try and figure out how to come together and move forward for our community. And I know it means a lot to our community when we're able to do that. It doesn't mean we have to have five oh on everything by any means, but I want to thank this board for their work here today. Before we go to the closed session items, I want to say that we're going to close the meeting today. And I want to do it right now while there's still semi-audience rather than at the end of the meeting, but I want to close the meeting today in honor of Bob King, who died in November. And Bob was well-known in this community. He was the owner of Redwood Empire Aggregates. He was affectionately known as Black Top Bob and just a great lover of the environment, loved to hunt and fish, go out on cattle drives and all that good stuff. And I just want to send out our best wishes and condolences to his family. He was a very, very much loved community member. So rest in peace, Bob King. And with that, we'll go to county council and have the two closed session items read to us and then we'll recess.
Thank you, Chairman Madron. It is the intention of the board to meet in closed session pursuant to California Government Code Sections 54954.5 and 54957 in order to consider the public employee performance evaluations for the positions of the Public Works Director and the Department of Health and Human Services Director.
Great. Thank you very much, council. And I believe these will take us probably at least an hour, maybe a little longer. And it's actually 10 after 12 right now. So I'm assuming the preference of the board would be to go ahead and get this closed session done rather than break for lunch. And then we'll have the rest of our days to deal with emails, phone calls, and all the rest of it. So at this point, we'll recess and we anticipate coming back sometime after.
Chairman Madron, we need public comment.
Yes, thank you very much. We'll be coming back sometime after 1:30 or so. So we'll take public comment. I'm looking into the Zoom and I imagine there's a hand up, but nope, no hand up in Zoom. Is there anybody here that wants to speak on the closed session items, which are evaluations of our Public Works Director and our DHHS Director?
Oh, your DHHS Director?
Those are the evals that we are doing today and that's what we're taking public comment on right now. It's a closed session item. Otherwise, this is the end of our agenda.
I don't even know where to start, but some of us can't handle their cows not being fed. I can't handle my friend who was raped starting at age 12 for four years and that her kid gets the shit beat out of him every time.
Maintain language, please. I'm sorry.
Okay. That he gets his head bashed in, that he has unknown amounts of head dense, brain damage in his head and there's nothing I can do to stop it. Okay? That is what I can't handle. I don't know how to get you all to care about children. I wish we cared about our children as much as we cared about our cows. I don't think Connie Beck is the appropriate person to be responsible for our families in Humboldt County. She clearly doesn't care. She knows who I'm talking about and she doesn't do anything. And she lied in front of everyone, in front of Nadine Burke Harris, Mike McGuire, saying that, that there's plenty of housing when I was homeless with my child while working for the county, finding out about these issues? Like what are we supposed to do? Children are getting murdered and you all don't care. Children are getting raped and you all don't care. Like I really don't know what to do. I don't know, but it's really weighing on people that do care. People are freezing to death in Eureka and you guys are acting like you're doing such a great job? Like how hard is it to open a building so people don't die? I don't want a child to die. And I've tried everything I can think of and nothing works. And I don't want a child to die, like, and I'm not alone. Like talk to any teacher and tell them, ask them about the reports that they made in regards to our children. Just because your white children that are protected because you have this job doesn't mean that no one else's children matter? Like what the heck are we supposed to do to get you to have us? To care about our children so that they don't have to die? We don't have to live like that. It's not that complicated to arrest someone that can get away with whatever crime that they want to because they have privilege, because they're white, and because they have relatives that work for this county, right? How is that fair? And why does nobody care about children? Why don't you care that children are getting raped? Maybe you don't care about girls, but would you like someone when you were 12 putting their penis inside of you without your consent? Like do I need to be that graphic because you all don't care? Because I'm telling, I've been coming, you guys don't care. I get my 27 seconds.
Chairman Madron.
Really?
Let's just let her finish.
You verbally abused my friend. Like you can't even handle hearing about it.
This needs to be about the eval. I understand your concerns.
Okay, well, she knows about this. Connie Beck knows that children are getting her and it's multiple children. She knows and she doesn't care. So this is not someone that should be responsible for our children. You yelled, you screamed at my friend when you found out. How is that appropriate?
Thank you, commenter. Okay, with that, we're going to go into recess and we'll be back sometime after 1:30 to Okay, we are back from our recess, from our closed session, and we'll have a report out by our county council.
There was no reportable action taken with regard to items M1 and M2.
Thank you, county council. And with that, we are adjourned.